Strategic planning session of the DOMS Select Board. It is Saturday, September 10th, 2022 at 9:00 AM. And we are going to begin this session with a presentation from the Waterways Committee. Informational update on Eel River West Coast Resiliency Grant Study and their annual report. And we have allotted 20 minutes for presentation. Welcome.
Thank you. So.
Does everybody have Jeff Thomas?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Jeff Thomas, I'm Waterways Chair.
Good to help you, so thank you.
The, there's a lot of slides. You may have reviewed it, but most of them are pictures, so this is not going to go 20 minutes.
Sorry, Jeff, let me.
Sorry. I mean, I could stand there if you, it would be better.
It might be better for the camera.
Yeah, and I can't, I know the slides because I wrote them, but I can just watch it. We're going to start with what we did for our yearly report. It's not that detailed. Most of what I want to talk about is the Eel River project or what's going on in the Eel River West area. So this is just what I'm going to talk about. I'm not going to bore you with that. Our 2023, wait, it's 2023 non-capital budget is going into town meeting. I just wanted everybody to know. We've asked for another $225,000 for the yearly maintenance, dredging maintenance going forward. And for the direction of a finance director. This time we've put a lot of, so if you look through the marine engineering services budget in that town, in the budget, there's a lot of different individual dredging line items, whereas before we lumped them into one. Like last year, we put in $350,000 in the budget. And now it's basically separate. We're using this first budget line item 225 for regular maintenance dredging and any engineering permitting cost we anticipate coming here. So what we did this year on the dredging side, the South Coast inlets, normally we do four. This year we only did Great Pond and Green Pond. Mother Nature was kind to us. We didn't have to do around the tide bulkhead on the inner harbor, nor did we have to do Eel River. The approach to Eel River and the Borne was basically not done this year. It's kind of waiting for the DPW project. The big thing is our 10-year comprehensive permit. 10-year comprehensive permit, for those who need to refresh what it is, is all of minor and major judging projects that we do on a regular or semi-regular basis go through a lot of permitting processes. We've had a 10-year permit, and that also includes where we can put the spoils, what beaches we can put them on. And it includes things like Trump River and Salt River, which are dredged for water quality, not for navigational purposes. Our committee really is focused on navigation. And the renewal is in process. It expired in February of 2022. And we've had a lot of issues getting it out and getting it in the process. And the good news is, we found out earlier this year, because of COVID, the state gave us an extension till the end of 2022. So what that means is we were allowed to dredge our normal dredging things that I mentioned, even though we had a permit that was about to expire this year. That won't be the case next year. So we're hoping, we're working with Woods Hole Group to tie all the rest of the issues together on it and then get it out and have it approved by the end of the year. NEPA required some additional information. We added the Great Pond Interior Channel, the McGansett Approach, and Trump River Interior. There were some changes on that for our water quality. So that required NEPA filing, so it kind of delayed things. And Great Pond Interior Channel, we had that targeted for this fall. That's the area south, actually north of the bridge going inside into Great Pond. And it really filled in two years ago. At low tide, sometimes it's two feet, two and a half feet, and it really needs to be dredged. It hasn't been dredged in many years. So we were able to sneak it, I won't say sneak it, incorporate it into the 10-year permit to make the whole permitting and the approval process easier. So that was kind of a win on that. But it also means we're now out of years. So the money for that is already in the budget last year for fiscal year 2023. So we don't need to go for more money to do the dredging, but we just have to wait for that 10-year comprehensive to be done. The only other two proj, a couple of other minor projects that have been delayed. In West Falmouth Harbor, we're working on a redesigned boat ramp. That's a non-standard, non-state approved ramp, very shallow, and it needs a lot of work. We've been dealing with the Army Corps of Engineers on that for a long time, past that. But we're putting floats, which haven't been there, on the boats. Our launch going down the ramp, this floats where the people can put their dinghies on it. Bottom line is, we need another $208,000 to pay for all that. And that's in the non-capital budget as a separate line item for this year. So assuming that it's approved, then we can go on a timeframe that's either finished it. And the Wild Harbor Bulkhead, that's a really nice hard bulkhead that was done about six years ago. Unfortunately, that harbor is not very boating friendly because it's really low, shallow at times. And people had a hard time with that design getting on and off the boats because it's a very tall cement bulkhead. There are some ladders, but we looked at it and we suggested to put in floats like we have on West Falmouth Harbor, and that really helped that problem. Again, we have another 50K in the budget for that for 2024 because there's some permitting involved. And two other items for this year, McGansett Harbor. This is just the review as the scenario there. Our approach is what needs to be dredged in the town. And the harbor master and our waterways has been working on that. That has been in the budget. The inner harbor, from our perspective, is okay. There's a lot of residents that are concerned about the inner part of that harbor and the current river, which goes into Swateek Harbor. That's very shallow. We told them, based on the priorities that we had, we didn't feel that it was worth Tom's expenses. There's like nine boats on moorings that are affected by that. And the bill to dredge that whole thing is probably going to be about a half a million dollars. So we kept it on our list of low priority, and the homeowners there, we're not happy with that. So in a very cooperative manner with us, they actually created an association. McGansett and Swateek Harbor residents, Swateek is born, as I showed on the diagram. And they've raised all the money for the engineering and permitting. They've worked with a municipal Clean Water Coalition. And their goal is to hand off to the town, a shovel-ready project, all permitted. And then we'll take it from there to see if we can get funding to actually execute it. No promises, obviously, because it's going to be a big bill. But because it's shared with Borne, we believe we can get some Masworth money to help pay for that. Borne is not, that area is not on Borne's, but I don't know what's either. So they're waiting for us to take the lead on it. And it just hasn't really moved forward because we're really tied up with Woods Hole Group, which has been busy with other projects in town. It looks like now the approach would be 2025. And lastly, Wacoit Bay Inbetam Channel. We wanted to make further progress on that. This year we were unable to. That area in blue is the main channel in Wacoit Bay. The area, especially to the north, has some shallower areas. This has not been dredged since right after World War II. Most of the waters are okay, except for deep drought boats like sailboats. So the Wacoit Bay Yacht Club has been pushing this for years. We picked up the challenge from them and we have been working it. But the biggest issue with that is it's 11,000 to 13,000 cubic yards, and none of it is beach compatible. So we don't know, and Woods Hole Group right now doesn't know where we can put it. And it'd be very expensive. Once it's dredged, it would have to be hauled out, de-watered, and then moved somewhere else. It's vegetative and it's, and it's, it's going to have to be treated separately. So it's going to be a very large bill. And we're still working on it. We're not too optimistic. We'll be on the schedule that we're on, and we do hope to have it done by 2025, December 2025. Mashkey has been working on a similar issue with their spoils, and they, after two years, they haven't been able to find a place to put them. So it's a similar challenge. So it's still underway, but we're behind on it. The big project, Eel River West, and that's really what I have most of my time to talk about. There's a lot of slides here, and most of them are pictures, and I'm not going to dwell on them. They're here for your reference. Eel River West is this area here at the bottom left of the slide. It's one of the most difficult areas in our town for navigation, to keep navigable. And it's a very popular and very dense area in terms of boating traffic. This in purple is currently the documented channel. When I talked earlier about the approach, that's the bottom line before the spit on Washburn Island there. We normally dredge that every spring, and that's one part of the 10-year comprehensive. The interior there is the Eel River Channel extension on here. You can see on the satellite photo, the channel goes right through a big sandbar. Mother Nature wants to close that sandbar. Last time we dredged it, three years ago, it filled in in four months. So, and it costs us about $85,000 to $100,000 every time we dredge. We were able to get a state grant last time. We will continue to do that until we have a better direction. But it's very challenging to keep that open. It's also because of the hydrodynamics, which were in this consultant's report that I'll talk about in a second. Every time we dredge, the property owners to the north of the yacht club, which is the ones kind of up there where it loops in, they lose their land. Some of those property owners have lost 10 feet of land in the last 10 to 15 years. So that's a problem. It's also a problem of navigation, sorry, public safety. A lot of people go to the end of that spit, put their boats there, their boats swing into the channel. There's a lot of people from the yacht club, and there's swimmers, paddleboarders, there's kayakers, as well as the motorboats and sailboats that go through there. And there's a lot of near misses. So one of our concerns is we need to make it safer for the general public. This is just some information so you know what it looks like. There's engineer structures there. The ones that are red are the town structures. We're not sure who originally put in the purple ones south of that island spit groynes. They're still there, but they're failing, and they're really not doing their job. And then there's hard armament around the yacht club. They just need to understand that, as some of the other points I'm going to make going forward. So from a historical change perspective, this is always changing. You can see on this diagram that in 1890, there wasn't an opening. And then Mother Nature is bringing it further to the north. And the last 10 to 15 years, fairly similar to where it is right now here in the darker color. And Hurricane Bob in 1991, kind of where that end of the D on the island, where it is, that actually broke through there, and for a year there was another opening there, thanks to Hurricane Bob. This is just another view of looking at how it's changed and where it is now. You can see on the left, in 1968, there's a big difference. You could also appreciate between now and 1968, or 2021, when this was taken, how much property those poor homeowners have lost due to the erosion. So what are we trying to solve? We're trying to solve the navigational issues. We can't bring boats through there, even at low tide, it's becoming really difficult. And we're wasting a lot of the resources, the towns and money, and everybody else is trying to keep that dredged. So it's, it's just not working. The public safety, as I mentioned, property erosion, those are the three big things that we as a waterways committee are trying to solve. Now, we don't own property erosion, but we're trying to help and work with the owners to include their concerns with whatever we do to solve the other issues here. So we, we realized that there was a similar issue in Barnstable. And if you look at these two pictures, Washburn Island, the tip of Washburn Island, which is obviously owned by the state, and Sampson's Island, which is owned by the Audubon Society, and Barnstable, that's the Tua Bay there, looks very similar configuration and have very similar issues. A little bit different, they didn't have property erosion issues, they didn't have navigation issues. Barnstable Clean Water Coalition was behind this effort, along with some of these property owners here. And they wanted to open that up, and they certainly did. They opened it up 450 feet. The project took multiple millions of dollars, and it took eight to nine years to do. They got a lot of money, grants from the state to do it, and they finally were able to get it done. And it solved their problem. So we said, well, that's a good model. So we were able to get a grant from the state to do a similar analysis. And the engineering firm that did this project also did our analysis. So they're familiar with that area. It was Applied, Applied Postal. John Reimsy was the principal scientist in that, an engineer in that, from Applied Postal. Midway through our contract, he left the company and started his own company and took some of the other principals working on this project with him. And the mutual agreement with the town is Applied Postal canceled the rest of the contract, and we set it up with a new company, which is Sustainable Postal Solutions. You'll see that at CES. So that's kind of where we are with that and why we did it. It, it cost us $85,000, and 75% we got the grant from the state, so it really only cost us 25% of that so far. We completed it in June. This is another accurate recent picture, and you can see again the shading of all that land that was lost. And there's really not a space between the tip of that island and yacht club. So I'm going to just show you a one-minute video. One of our members put together here. It's on YouTube, so anybody can see it. And it's a time sequence that he did.
Do you need to use the control click?
Oh, okay.
Or I can freeze the close screen.
All right, sorry. You have to put your cursor on the link. Yeah.
It's going to give it tracking.
It's off to your left. Thought I did that, so I might have to switch. Sorry, I'm taking a lot of your time for this one minute, so it may not be worth trying to get it done. Yes, it's on.
Is there a sound?
No, no sound. But there is an ad. Always. Doesn't come free.
No, this is something else.
Yeah, this isn't, I don't remember there seeing an ad.
It's on one of the other capitals.
That's Troubled Water, that's not. Kevin King, one of our members, had put this together, and it really graphically shows the changes recently.
This is a story about my town. This could be a story about your town. It's a tale about a public health issue that's been lost in the shadows of betrayal and denial. Your town is like my town.
Just muted, muted.
Pleasant streets that lie over.
That was Troubled Water, the other video.
There you go. Yeah, I didn't think we had audio on.
It was fine at first.
It actually sounds like Captain Phil.
The betrayal of the failure to judge.
That was a little weird.
It's almost done. A minute is an awful long time when you're impatiently waiting. But you can see in the last five to seven years, it's fairly stabilized. And there's a good example of how un-navigable that channel is. Okay.
It's a pretty dangerous corner.
It's very dangerous. I'll go back to this. So this analysis and this study is a very detailed hydrodynamic model. I put a link in this, and I had sent copies of this study to the board a month or so ago when it came out. But it's 73 pages long, and it's very detailed. And even though I have an engineering background, I didn't follow some of the mathematics in it. But it, most of it is understandable, and it basically comes to a conclusion. And focused, obviously, they're the ones that architected Sampson's Island focus. We believe, as I'll give to a minute, that could be part of the solution, may not be, it may not be worth doing it. But it looked, the focus was shortening the Washburn Island Spit approximately 350 feet. Now, going to the state and asking them to take 350 feet of that island off is a non-trivial task, obviously, even if it's feasible. 31,000 cubic yards. And it's, they're considering it a 20 to 30-year solution. So even if we did it, pulled it off, is it worth it to do it for 20 years? Really gets into your coastal resiliency discussions. And it would take several years for design permitting and execution. It takes us, for a new dredging project today that's simple and uncomplicated, and it'll take us five-plus years to get that done. So this one, I would imagine, would take a lot longer than that to get done, and it would certainly be in the millions of dollars. And obviously, there are potentials for grants from the state. Kevin King, who did the video, also did this for illustrations. 100 feet is, today is the narrowest part of the inlet. 240 feet is what Sampson's Island would, was, just as a relative comparison. This overlays ours. The overlay he did is what they're proposing to do in the 350-foot cutoff in the solution is part of our study, just so you can see the relative magnitude of what this would be. And then Eel River, again, Sampson's Island from the beginning there, and then Sampson's Island at the end, where it was 607 feet. It made a difference there. So far, after about a year, it's stabilizing itself. And then we'll be maintaining dredging inquiry, but they believe it solved their problem. Will it solve our problem? We don't know. So let's get to the chase. The consultants are saying, obviously, what are your options? Take no action, it's always an option. Dredge the existing channel and use the status quo that we've been doing. Shorten the spit, use hard structures, which obviously nobody wants to use hard structures. Use soft structures to protect the further erosion. And the soft structures, even the consultants are saying, is not going to solve anything. They're just going to deteriorate. There's too much wave action and too much turbulence in that water. So, and then combinations of the above. That's what they're recommending. Our committee talked about this for three different months. We engaged as much of the public as we could. And after three different months, we came up with some other options. Created a more sustainable channel to the east of the current one. If you go back to the picture I had, and you saw that big sandbar to the east of that, about 150 to 200 feet, we're calling it the natural channel. It goes from the bottom of Seacoast shores to the island. And it's actually a mooring field, but it's stable in there. So all the local residents are doing is using that rather than the main channel. And there's an option to relocate the channel there. And the problem that we had was, Waterways tried to do that in 2008 and got shut down by the Conservation Commission due to the fact that the commercial shellfish community bought it with a, per a shellfish prosecution. But a lot has changed on the commercial shellfish side, and we don't believe that that's going to be an issue or as much of an issue. So pursuing that could be part of a solution. And then people had ideas about maybe we can reconfigure those abandoned groynes into a jetty and put a jetty going in there. And then do that in a combination of taking some of that island off. Again, there's combinations and permutations that are, a million combinations and permutations. And that was public feedback as well as our committee. So what's, so I kind of said, how do I quantify this? Because I'm an engineer and I like quantification. So I just took a stab at these main items, and I say, okay, red means it's not going to help. The yellow or amber in this, it'll give us a little improvement, but it's not going to be that great. Blue would solid it, and the green would make it better. So when you go down this matrix of all these combinations and permutations, nothing really solves the problem. The best solution we could have would be the major solution of shortening that spit of the island. We're always going to have erosion, but it could be controlled even with a soft solution at that point.
Mr. Thomas, I'm just going to let you know you have your time, which is fine. I'll give you a few more minutes. I just also want to leave time for the board to ask you some questions.
I've got one more slide.
Yep, that's fine.
So after three months, and we worked a lot on it, we've worked on it before the consultant study was done, we have been unable as a committee to reach an agreement, and we're going to consensus. Three or four of our committee members, including myself, are town meeting members, so we look at this from a financial perspective. And looking at the bill for that and trying to sell that to town meeting, we're not optimistic we could do that. There's a lot of variables and factors to a solution, and there's no one clear path. And so we're basically looking for the Select Board to help us proceed forward with this. Not a direction, not a solution. But we're just basically, our heads to the wall, and you know, this has to be part of the town's overall plan, not just this one minute, you know, small section, microcosm of what we're doing. And basically, that's, that's it.
Questions from the board.
Jeff, it seems like the way that nature is pushing that sand into the yacht club, it seems to me like the new channel might be more practical. Why was your last comment that it seems the easiest thing to do is just keep going with that place by the yacht club?
If we decided to do that today and we succeeded with it, we would probably want to take a little bit of that spit off. This gets complicated because if you look at one of the original slides I showed you, I didn't go into it, but this slide right here, you can see that channel goes right through the end of that island.
Yeah.
Our 10-year comprehensive permit allows us to dredge to the right of that purple line. Webner would not agree to do that, even though it's been the plan for the last 10 years. We have an agreement with Webner to get the new extension going. To leave that in the plan, what we want to execute to that, we'll execute to the current open water. So as part of that channel, we would, if we move the channel, we really need to make that rounding around the bend a little better. And we would have to go back to some of the boundaries and take some more of that off.
Well, I was suggesting if we went with the new
Well, I was suggesting if we went with the new channel, we just let nature take its course and fill that in?
Oh, that's a whole different, yeah, we...
Because then you're right, the channel on the other side is much more effective. That's where everyone goes, and then you put the coast.
That's another option. We considered that. We always thought, consideration was that we would keep that open as much as possible.
I see.
Any other questions from the board? Yes, please.
What were some of the considerations that you had to attain with dissolution of their spoils, dredging spoils? What are some, you mentioned that you have a problem, but had you ever investigated where to get rid of them?
Yeah, we're trying, we're relying on the Woods Hole group. Mashpee, actually, there's a marina in Barnstable Harbor that had a similar problem, and they recently dredged outside their marina, and they couldn't find a place for it. So they actually went out and bought an open field somewhere in Barnstable and dumped it there. Mashpee tried, tried to use some of their land to put their spoils, and they weren't succeeding. So Mashpee's been trying for three years to find a place to put this. You know, there's, it's not toxic or anything, but it's not beach compatible, and, you know, it'll be full of salt.
Has anybody ever considered, like, the landfill in Horn or approaching anybody there? I know their cap was fly ash, and that's got to be far more caustic than beach dredging spoils.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that, Scott. Certainly ask, but I'm sure Woods Hole group will be looking at that. Because part of their, our contract is for the engineering and permitting, and includes where we're going to put this stuff.
Thank you, thank you, Matt.
My thought is, and I'm not sure if the board agrees with this, but I'm not sure that we're at a point today to give you input or guidance on your direction. So I would like to bring this back to a board meeting so that we can have a longer conversation about this. If that's agreeable to the board. I just, there's a ton of information here, and I know that you're looking to us for input and guidance, but I'm not sure today is the day to do that.
Oh, I didn't expect the answer today.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because I think we need to process this a little more.
This area has been a problem for many years, so direction today.
Mr. Price?
Actually, I'll, I'll hold on.
I do have one question for Jeff, quite good. And that is, was there, I don't know if this is a criteria you looked at, you may well have, would the dredging approach where you're reducing the size of the sand spit and increasing the flow into a coit bay, would that have a significant impact on the water quality of a coit?
Good question. According to the analysis, and according to talking to the Water Quality Management Committee, which I went to for this plan two years ago, they don't believe that there's a problem in that area enough that this will impact positively or negatively, basically, with the water quality. So they think this would be a neutral to that. But they're also saying, there's not enough issues right now there to use water quality as another determinant and justification to do this project. I was hoping that they would jump on it, but they didn't. So we're kind of on our own from a committee perspective.
Thank you.
Just a quick question. There's a couple of aquaculture projects there along the side of Washburn Island. This closes off, how's that going to impact that?
None of us ever had closing that off.
Well, if you let it go.
Yes, yeah.
Nature, nature's not going to close it. Pressure's, it's always going to be here in some form. Anybody ever consider opening it up on the right?
Let's, we need to stay focused with Mr. Thomas, please. Are you all set?
All set.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for your time. In short, as always, thanks.
Very well.
Good job, as always, thank you.
Very well done.
And thanks for all your hard work, Jeff. I mean, I ran into Jeff in West Palm Harbor surveying things, and he is very active with the Knopscalk Light project, so thanks so much for your volunteer time.
My pleasure, thank you.
Okay, we will move on to our next order of business, which is strategic planning discussion, and I will turn that over to Vice Chair Scott Price.
Right. Good morning. So we're passing around the document that I put together, and I'd like to preface a little bit of what I see, the goal of this future session to be, and what you have in front of you. So what I did was took the SMART goals that were sent to me and some of the feedback from the last strategic planning session on that Saturday, and put them into a more usable format, one where we can discuss these goals. This is by no means meant to incorporate everything that was discussed. This is, as I mentioned in my email, my interpretation of the things that came out that were important, and then what I received. So not everything is in this document, but this document is focused on specific items that I received from board members, and specifically ones that had an impact on the budget. So the idea for today is to look through these goals, see if we agree on what these goals are, which ones will impact the upcoming operating budget, and then prioritize those. So that way, we can present clearly to Peter, these are our goals that we need to see reflected in the upcoming operating budget, and then go from there. I also want to say that I sat down and reviewed all of these with Peter, and so far, all the things that are in here are doable. Some of them are actually in process already, which is good to know, and they are things that we can do. They're in no particular order. I actually meant to put them in alphabetical order, but I forgot to do that. And the way that they are written, it has the overarching priority area, followed by broad goals, then specific goals, if it has budget implications, and then what potential action steps or items to be done. And then some of the goals, excuse me, some of the strategic priority areas also have additional items that are not specific or do not require action items, but were important enough to continue keeping it strategic planned. I've also made note on each one where they came from, so you'll notice that several items say from FY '22 to '26 plan. So items that were goals, et cetera, that were in the FY '22 to '26 plan that correlated to things that we talked about in the last strategic planning session that have not already been done are included in this new document. The other thing I'll say is, on the very front page, I stepped out what these, what these are. So the strategic priority areas are meant to tell the town manager, investment department heads, what the select board has identified as the town priorities. Then the broad goals are specific areas within those priorities that we determined we want to focus on. The specific goals are attainable goals that we are setting with timelines. And then the ongoing goals, as I mentioned, are not necessarily specific. They are ongoing, perhaps, perhaps they're already in process, and we want to monitor them before they need further discussion. Okay, does everybody follow me so far? I know that was a lot.
Thank you.
Okay. So these strategic priority areas that are listed here, again, came out of the last strategic planning session we had and the feedback that I received from you all. The reason why there is not a specific one in this current document that I printed that is financial and economic stability, is because some of the things that were listed in our previous strategic plan actually fit into some of these other sections, some of these other areas, so I moved them in there. Also, because I think it's really important that we focus today on the areas that are going to have budget implications, and then we can add in the language and the financial and economic development that do not affect the budget in later. So that was my thinking, was to keep us a bit focused on prioritizing the areas that affect the budget today. So that's where we are. So some of the priorities to be considered across the town that don't necessarily fit into any of these, but are very important, we have maintaining financial stability, AAA bond rating, and I'm asking Peter to prepare a presentation to talk about AAA bond rating, because that was one of the few items of disagreement. Making use of appropriate public-private partnerships, again, not something that needs its own priority area, but something to be considered within all of our priorities. Diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility, and cooperating with and leveraging the work of the Cape Cod Commission, regional nonprofits, state, and federal government for leaders and programs. Again, not an area that is specific, but something that we need to keep in mind as we work through all of these priority areas. Everybody with me so far? Any questions?
We're reading now, we don't have that in here.
It's the very first page.
Oh, that's still all the same.
It's all, yeah.
Okay. I guess you're elaborating a little bit.
A little bit, yeah. Okay, that's all I have on my notes to remember to say before we dive into it. Any questions so far about this plan or anything that I just referenced about?
Have we talked to start with this year's budget and things that we want to push right this year, or are we talking, this is more long-term?
So a little bit of both. Once we look through what the goals are, we'll see which ones are immediate priorities and which ones are more long-term. So the immediate ones, we will want to make sure that we talk about, is how, if we, if we want to make them a priority, make sure that is clear, so that when Peter puts operating budget together, he gives us options for those.
And we'll try to put a timeframe on all of them.
We'll try to put a time, exactly. And then there's going to be some longer-term ones that Peter can let us know, that's going to be a longer-term, you know, there's, for example, there's something that came up when I sat with Peter, he said, we actually have already started on this process. So once we go through, we'll see which ones need to be immediate, which ones need to be longer-term. Which ones are going to be operating versus capital budget. Well, since the AAA bond rating is on the front page, would you give a...
Sure. So first of all, I want to say, the presentation may be an overstatement of what I had prepared to deliver this morning, but definitely prepared to go through what the criteria are and facilitate a conversation about, you know, how important it is, or how important it should be, and to what extent it does or does not limit the board, you know, coming to conflict with what some of the other boards' priorities might be. So Sam, you know, was absolutely correct when he said at the last meeting that the purpose of the bond grading is to serve the lenders, right? The whole purpose of having a bond grader is to advise lenders and investors what is the credit worthiness of the entity. It's not, you know, it's not designed to be a tool necessarily. The intent isn't, you know, to guide decisions for the leaders of the town for managing our community. So in terms of how the credit grading is determined, there are five broad criteria that are looked at by the bond grading agencies. The first one is the economy. So that's, you know, nothing to do with the municipal finance itself, but what is the economy of the town and of the region that it operates in. So that is an area that we have very limited control over. And, you know, when the economy is very strong, that, that helps the town's bond grading, and if the regional economy is, it's a severe downturn and/or is determined to have long-term risks associated with it, then that would affect our bond rating beyond anything that the town might be able to control. Debt structure is another element of the bond grading criteria. So they, they, the bond grading agencies want to know how much debt you have, how much debt do you have relative to your annual revenues? How much debt do you have relative to the valuation of the town? And not just, you know, the town municipality property, but all of the residential and commercial property. And how quickly, what's the term of payment? So, you know, is the debt level, is the debt, are there balloon payments so that the debt goes up in future years? We have been using a declining balance debt structure, which the bond grading agencies like, because it pays off the principal earlier and creates flexibility sooner rather than later in terms of the bond, the debt levels falling on in out years. Financial condition of the municipalities is one of the factors. So that means, what, what are the town's revenues relative to the town's recurring expenses? You know, how tight is it? How aggressive are we on our estimates relative to, you know, the estimates that we rely upon for balancing the budget versus prior year actual revenues? What are the, you know, what are our reserve balances? Stabilization fund, reserve fund, and we have, you know, several different types of stabilization funds. They look at OPEB and pension liability, that's part of the financial condition. So, so that's financial condition. The fourth criteria is demographics. So, you know, what are the, what's the income level of the town essentially? What's the unemployment rate? What's the poverty rate? What's the median income, et cetera? And lastly, management capabilities and priorities. So, you know, what's the management experience? What's the financial experience? They look at, you know, budget policies and practices, and essentially, how well managed the town is, and how that can affect the financial condition. So, so that's basically it. So then, coming back to, to what extent, you know, if, if the board retains a goal of maintaining a AAA bond grading, how does that conflict potentially with other goals? You know, certainly, if the board wanted to, wanted to increase expenditures beyond the prior year for hiring new staff, or, you know, whatever it might be on the expense side, without, and, and doing so in a way that goes, that's not funded with an override, and it goes above and beyond what the reasonable revenue increase forecast for the next year is, then that could, that could affect our bond rating, because the revenue estimates are, you know, are less conservative, there's a tighter balance. At the end of that year, you'll see the, you know, there are several different ways that the bond grading agencies look at financial balance and, you know, the balance sheet and the reserves. So, you know, one of them is, is a very basic, okay, at the end of the year, what's your uncommitted balance in all of the different pockets? You know, what are the uncommitted balances of funds? And if we're tighter on our expenses and our budget relative to the revenues, that, that balance is going to shrink. So, you know, certainly, it could come into play in that circumstance. We do, I don't have, I don't have the quantified measures for you this morning, but in terms of debt capacity, that's another area where it potentially could come into play. But I would, you know, I can assure you, we are very far from reaching a point where we're going to be taking on more debt that's going to become a concern for the bond grading agencies. And partly, it depends on how the board chooses to fund that debt. You know, we have been relying primarily for large borrowing projects that have been exempted from the levy. So that means it creates a dedicated funding stream, right? So what a debt exemption does is it says, under Prop 2 and 1/2, the voters are authorizing the town to raise whatever the principal interest payments are on an annual basis for the life of the debt for that project. So let's take the, the recent wastewater treatment facility upgrades, 25 million, that was just approved. That's not pinching our operational revenues competing with anything else, because a debt exclusion was, was approved, which we have the authority to raise new property tax revenue to cover the exact amount of the principal and interest for that bond. There does get to be a ceiling, you know, there are many, many measures that the bond grading agencies look at, and one of them is, how much debt do you have relative to your revenues? How much debt do you have relative to the income of the entire community and the valuation of the entire community? So there could be a point, even with exempt debt, where the debt, the Moody's and Standard Coors start to become concerned about, about the amount of debt that the town has obligated. But we have a long way to go before we hit any of those limitations. I can tell you anecdotally, in the future, we're going to look at that more closely as the board, you know, the board wants to look at big borrowing commitments in the So I think that's pretty much it. I have no questions.
Mr. Patterson?
Yeah, I think I'm probably the person that brought this issue up, and I've been on the floor longer than I did the rest of you. And I'd say about seven or eight years ago, when we kept increasing the reserve funds, I asked a question of Jennifer, I said, what's the logical amount of reserve we should have relative to our... You know, what's the logical amount of reserve we should have relative to our annual revenue or expenditures of the town? And they said 5%. Well, now, all of a sudden, I see, you know, in our strategic plan, oh, 5 to 25%. And also in that same timeframe, what I see is a larger amount of open vacancies on the town staff. And that is certified free cash, which of course, at the end of the year gets funded and moved over into our capital as a way of funding our capital budget. And that's just a dynamic that bothered me because it seemed like we were robbing Peter's day pool. And that the question of, since we have such a low tax rate, you know, is this a pattern that we want to continue down? When perhaps we should be investing more in staffing and perhaps, you know, going out for more overrides so that we're not jeopardizing the AAA bonding? Personally, I want to see us manage very conservatively our financial goals. That's not my, that's my whole MO personally. But I am concerned about the pattern that I've seen over the last eight years. And I just want to make us aware of it. And I don't like the idea of just using the AAA bond rating as a metric for the financial well ma, or financial management of the town. I want us to be able to second guess whether those financial institutions that are lending us the money, the bond money, are using the standard that's in the best interest of the town. Are you ready for that? Not, not simple, complicated, but it's a pattern that I've seen that raises concerns in my mind. And it's really from the perspective of being a concern with financial management.
If I may, I, the point about the staff is important and timely because there are many points within the document that I've sent out. But I don't want to say this is our new plan. This is just a draft of our areas and goals. There are multiple goals in here that are asking for new staff and funding the local staff positions that we currently have.
So, is maintaining the AAA bond rating directly because of not being able to hire or hire competitively or add new staff?
You're asking me?
I am.
I don't see any connection between the two. I, you know.
I don't either, but I wasn't sure.
Sure. So, yeah, so to respond to that concern, you know, certainly I have not, and I'm not aware of Julian or Jennifer delaying hiring in order to generate free cash in order to protect the bond rating. I don't, I don't believe that has been part of the thinking. And I can certainly assure you, I don't think it's a valid approach. You know, I'm very motivated to fill the vacancies that we have. You know, I get lots of feedback from the board, from constituents. Everybody wants things done. I want things done. I want to be able to say, you know, I want to be able to not get the call in first place because it's already done. So, I'm very motivated to fill all these staff positions. And I'm not concerned that having all the staff positions filled is going to affect our bond rating. Now, that said, actually, I often harken back to when, when I was appointed to the board and I was at the first board meeting and asked to introduce myself. And Sam was the only individual who asked me a question at the time. And in typical Sam fashion, a very challenging question. You asked me, Sam, what do you see as the, some of the biggest challenges facing FELM? And I wasn't, to be honest, I wasn't terribly well-prepared for that question. But I knew that regionally, one of the biggest challenges that I saw six years ago was the ability to recruit and retain qualified staff because of the demographic trends and because of the property values. And that's, you know, you're going to, you're going to hear from me as we, I mean, you've already heard it from me and as we continue to talk about strategic planning and budget priorities for the coming years, that's, that's a front and center concern for me is that we need to think about those challenges and how we address them. And, you know, to what extent it means pay increases, to what extent it means, you know, other, what other strategies can we explore to be able to build those positions and retain the staff as fast as possible?
I'll say kind of what I said at our last meeting. When I said that AAA bond rating is important, it's only because I want to emphasize that we need to stay focused on financial responsibility. We do have a large wish list. And we have a lot of residents advocating for new initiatives and new hires, you know, high-level hires. And that's hard to sustain with the benefit package and all. So, I think that we need to stay focused on not blowing the budget. I was a little concerned that we're buying a fire truck with reserve funds this year. I don't remember having done that for quite some time, a capital purchase of reserve funds. So, that's a concerning trend. And that's another reason why I put this as a goal.
So, the, the funds that we're using for the fire truck are specifically capital stabilization reserves. And we have used them over the past nine years. Not every year, but that is part of the plan because we put money in every year. So, there needs to be money, you know, if you don't use it ever, then we don't need to put money in. So, it is.
So, the reserve fund term is kind of maybe misleading to me because it's really designed for that, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay.
There are many reserve funds for various purposes.
Yes, the department has reserve funds issued to the town departments.
I think it's a fine point to make public. I think it's a really good point.
Yes. Peter, are any of the, the open vacancies and positions right now unfunded already? Is money there for the, for the positions that are taken right now?
Right.
I mean, there's money for the positions that are open right now. So, there's no reason why, I mean, that's not a restriction on trying to get people in. There's plenty of those positions at present, right?
Absolutely right. By definition, when I, what I call a vacancy means it's a budget position that's not filled. But if you're referring to my talking about how that is a, you know, is a concern and an issue, talk about funding going forward, what I mean by that is wage rate increases.
Thank you.
Yes.
And that was, we also spoke last time, potentially consideration of our override for making our budget sustainable. And the reason I mentioned that, nobody wants to hear that, but every time I look at our wage structure, whether it's DPW, seasonal help, H's, or high-level staffing, I feel like we're underpaying. And I think we've got away with it a long time because we found it's a nice place. But being a nice place, I want to take pictures so far. When our, if you look on Zillow right now, the average sale price of a home is around $98,000. It's a serious sale price. It's crazy. And that leads to what's going to be our median house value as we move forward. And it just, we're getting so unaffordable, so fast, that hiring is going to be more and more problematic. And I don't know what the reasons are why so many people are leaving, but I suspect there's better pay and lower cost of holding bridge. So, I think we need to really, I think this is already in the works of doing the evaluation of compatibility and comparisons of what, if we're underpaying, so I want to find out soon. What really are, what will should be?
And we do need some numbers around that, right? Before, before I would even think about supporting an override. I'd want to know, you know, like what it looks like and what, what it actually comes down to in terms of numbers. Because it's, I, I absolutely see where you're going in terms of an overarching goal and I agree. But in order to fund that, we don't have enough information from my research.
I'm not, I'm not proposing it happen now. That's another reason why I, last week, my last meeting, I spoke, talked, maybe holding off on the fire station just one year. Just till we get some information to know better what we're really, what our real sustainable numbers are.
You mentioned, you also explained the fact that you have legal issues with that financially as well.
Well, maybe, yeah.
Possibility that happens.
Yep.
That has to take into consideration as well.
Absolutely.
Can I just make one point?
We're not taking public comments.
I just want to say, I mean, this problem is exacerbated by the accessibility of affordable housing. And I'm, you know, as you pointed out, it's through the entire spectrum of positions within the town. And so, hiring people now is becoming a challenge at the highest level. Because who could afford to come and buy a piece of property and even rent here? And not to mention the fact that, you know, the amount of rental properties really torn down, so you have to. So, we're in a deep hole. And I'm very much worried about the situation. And that's not us only, this is across the entire Cape. You know, as Jay Colburn from the Outer Cape Economic Development Organization basically said, you know, "We can't afford to lose the people that can't afford to live here." Well, this is anything that's true, but we can't report, we can't replace the people that are leaving with quality people or anybody, really, given the cost of housing here. It's really more than just a crisis. And that was accurate in the Cape Commission Summit, local Cape Summit. And, you know, if you listen to the, if you did Doug, the Cape Highlands Leaders Association. It's, it's universal, but it's a serious, serious problem for us economically. That's why I'm concerned about using, you know, a metric that is not our metric, but the lender's metric as a sole indicator of our financial well-being and our investment policies moving forward.
But we increase, we increase the ability for people to, to make their properties larger and more expensive. We push permits and we support building of local economy, which, which makes the buildings and the properties more valuable, which exacerbates the issue that you're talking about right now. So, you can't, you almost can't have it both ways. We, we push your building, you know, how many permits have you got to reduce the size of a property?
Zero.
So, what does that do to the equation that we're talking about?
That's natural growth.
Well, I understand that, but I'm not saying that out loud.
I'm just going to say, we've got to make sure that we provide the other.
Sorry.
Okay, let's go back to our plan. We need to go back to our goals.
I know, but relative to the subject, this is where, you know, other municipalities are performing a short-term rental restriction because I have an neighbor who sold his property for over a million dollars and it's going out for Airbnb. It's become a business property and a residential.
We're right on the cusp of becoming a real managed professional operation. They're going to come in and swoop up huge amounts of property.
Exactly. You know, and they're going to pay no more taxes than a resident that lives, that would have lived in that property.
I want to ask, Peter, the study that's being done about the wages, are we going to have the time to consider that for the next operating budget or is that going to be too late?
It probably will not be final by October 1st. I'm sorry, you said the next operating budget, yes.
Okay.
Yes, for the FY24 budget, absolutely, yes.
So, something that we will be able to consider when we come back and we look at the budget, anything that we decide, what we think about today, we might want to keep the budget in a long time before the budget's actually released.
Yes, but let me clarify what that study is. So, this study is for two groups out of, you know, maybe eight groups of employees. This is for non-union, which is your management positions, professional positions, and some of the confidential clerical positions. And it's for the library employees. We've already done similar compensation studies and implemented wage rate increases for other groups of employees, including DPW, which was a 16% increase to the, to the wage schedule across the board. The employees did not immediately get a 16% increase in the way we implemented it, but the pay plan did go up 16%. The Action Group Unit A, which is a lot of our clerical administrative union employees, that was two years ago, and that went up 14%. So, it's not like we haven't been thinking about this and working on this. And I would just say with police and fire, every contract rounds, there have been more than COLA increases for police and fires. And that is based in part on informal wage studies that we do. So, what I'm, what I'm going to be suggesting is, you know, incrementally working on this issue. I'm not thinking that for the FY24 budget, I'm going to be, you know, coming in and saying, okay, we need a 10% increase for every employee.
So, the important thing to hear is that you already have increased certain departments, certain employment to get them to a comparable rate, number one. Number two, you've been able to do it already within the confines of our budget. And I think that's what's really important to hear. Yes, you have groups that you're still looking at. And you should be able to come back to us to tell us whether that indicates some suggestion of an override or whether you can do it within the operating budget. And to me, that's critical as we're doing these goals moving forward. Because it's not like you haven't done it. It's not like you have to do the entire town. You've already been doing it incrementally, and that's really.
I think that's a great point. If I could just expand on that. We, I think we're planning at the next strategic planning retreat to talk more specifically about the FY24 budget. And, you know, we talked about new initiatives, we talked about new positions. One of the things that I want to bring to that conversation is this, you know, and I want to bring a proposal for wage rate increases because it may be that you do have to make choices if there, if we want to do some wage rate increase implementation and we don't want an override, that may be, you know.
And that's kind of where the rubber hits the road, right? Because that's exactly what I think Doug is trying to say. Not just in terms of the wage increases, but again, making those choices and do we want new positions that people have been asking for?
So, again, that's why.
And how.
The document that we're looking at today, while it has touched on the ones that we discussed already, would really want us to focus on the ones that may increase the budget, may affect the budget. So, if we agree, we would, this is a priority for us. For example, one of the things in here is sustainability director. If we decide this is an absolute priority, then when we have a discussion on October 1st, Peter will be able to bring up that information and say, this is what it looks like if it's in the budget. Or it's not possible to do all these things in the budget, but you could fix and match a new leasing. So, that's kind of why this document is the way that it is right now. So, the first item in here is affordable housing. I don't think we need to spend much time on it. We're all really very focused. I will just point out that the FY2226 plan did not have its own section on affordable housing, but in most of this was embedded within the financial and economic stability section. But as you can see, it said prioritize affordable housing to support retention higher in the town staff and maintain stability of town operations. That is the language from the whole plan. What I've added to this is that basically all of us have said, we also want to prioritize affordable housing for our residents as well, not just people who work in the town. And I think adding that is important. And then here, none of this specifically has budget implications. It's just about ways that we can support increasing affordable housing and that the, it would be the town manager and the housing coordinator to work on these things. It doesn't, the way these action items and steps are written is not saying how this work has to be done. It's basically giving suggestions and guidance for the town manager, in this case, the housing coordinator, for what they can do towards managing this issue.
I think it's important to call and know that it's a role.
Yeah. I think you're right on that point. So, if it's okay with everyone, I'll just move on to the next one.
I wonder if we can consider prioritizing action on regulation or prohibition of short-term rentals? Because I feel like it's, we're right on the cusp of that, if we explore it. As I mentioned before, I traveled Maryland and Virginia. I was looking through the area of these and I was just flabbergasted at the volume of one corporation owned this massive amount of property. Black ground. And it just made me think about, no, it wasn't that, it was a different one, but it was just the one that was regional in that area. It just made me think about, once that strikes here.
Yeah, so, in the second, but in the second broad goal here, under action steps, it says housing coordinator in collaboration with affordable housing committee to be innovative and radical. That's my new word, I like using radical. Ways to increase housing stock. And then there's just some examples addressing the AD bylaw fusion, researching Airbnb moratorium, reviewing strategies for other Cape towns. So, I think here is where, if we say that the, that our strategic goal is to build more affordable housing, support more affordable housing and give that as a directive and have the housing coordinator working with the affordable housing committee to research, just like you're saying. Because it's going to be, have research done to find out how it's done, how it's implemented. But I would make sure that.
Just trying to say, we can push it to the top. There's a way to expedite that, I just think that's really important.
Yeah.
I do want to comment that there, for affordable housing, we have, as the board's aware, structurally funding sources for affordable housing. But there is potential for budget implications and capital implications. If we're, if we're going to continue, if we're inappropriate for cash in the future, you know, that, that's part of the revenue mix for capital funding. And then the board recently revisited the fiscal policy in terms of the short-term rental revenue and how that gets allocated. So, the. So there are some, there's progress to be made without new obligations, but there definitely are implications.
The next one we have is water, replace water and solid, solid waste management. So ensure continual supply of hard-drink water and adequate water pressure. Again, that was from the FY2226 plan, that I also discussed at our last meeting. And, and then I have Scott's initials here because these SMART goals specifically came from Scott. And so the idea is to replace the larger section of the existing water mains. And to do that, we would need to have a capital budget increase for that project. Timeline is January 2026 a reasonable timeline for this, Peter?
Um, so I think it depends on what we mean by the timeline. So it's gonna, it's gonna take decades to replace all of the water mains that need to be replaced.
Things start starting on that project.
So we have, we have funding for, for some water main replacement projects for design in hand now with a plan to borrow funds in one year. So, you know, potentially, and hence, and that won't be the first water main replacement project. Again, I'm just, I'm starting a little bit with, you know, what the, what the benchmark is. You know, if we'd wanna be more specific and, and have a timeline for a long-term, you know, a formal study and a long-term plan of, okay, what is our 20-year plan to replace water mains? Then I think January 26th is certainly realistic. I'd like to see it done before then.
I think, I'll just say that it seems realistic to keep in, for us to keep in mind as we're thinking about these timelines, is that we're very short-staffed in town hall right now. So until we fill all of the positions, and so that's the town manager, the acting town manager, and the HR director, and now the CFO. Until we fill those positions, or at least significantly fill those positions three or four, maybe, some of these things, we would like to have done sooner, but I think.
And the water shouldn't.
And the water shouldn't. So those are things that I think are, we keep in mind as we think about the timeline for these things. So I think 2026, love to have it done before then, but realistically, that's a realistic timeline.
And it's always okay to over-villure, right?
Oh, absolutely.
So it's always okay. I just want to add one comment, and that is that as we were starting to think about our strategic planning, I met with Peter Johnson Staub and Peter Connerdees. Because I wanted to get a sense from certain departments, big departments, what do they see as their priorities? What do they see needs to happen? I did not get into staffing or anything like that. But one of the things that Peterson corrected me if I'm wrong, he said three things. Water, water, infrastructure. So drinking water, wastewater, and then really thinking local infrastructure, rules, those kinds of things. So to me, I just needed to hear from him that what he saw as the town's really important issues kind of lined up about us before I could move forward. So I just wanted to add his comments because I thought they were, were really important and very targeted.
Those are all capital budget items, so I assume that we would go out for overrides and pay for those, right?
Well, that's, we would do, that's part of what the study would look at, Sam, is the other revenue source potentially is the water rates, right? Right now, the water rates do not support, the, the water rates fully support all of the operational costs. They do not fully support all of the capital costs. So that will be, you know, part of the study is gonna come back and say, okay, here are some options for the select board to consider. You know, do you want to, do you want to use existing water revenue rates only and fund whatever cannot be funded within those rates from exempt debt? And, or do you want to look at increasing the water rates and being able to do more of those capital projects without debt? And then, of course, the debt conversation becomes part of the, the larger tax burden conversation. We, you know, worked very hard, you know, we, Julian, Jennifer Mullin, and myself, over the years, to maintain a, to manage our exempt debt in such a way that the total debt is level, so that the tax burden doesn't increase with new projects. So again, that's, that's going to be part of the conversation is, you know, do we, do we maintain that? Do we consider that, you know, we can't defer the water main replacements anymore? We do need to increase the tax burden and do more borrowing than we've done in the past in order to accomplish these projects.
Isn't, isn't it reasonable to, to assume that at some point, if we continue to let this go, that we're gonna exhaust the monies that are in the budget going forward with repairs? That you're gonna be forced to do something that isn't, isn't within the budget? The older this gets, the longer it goes, the more unexpected the costs are gonna be because of, we're just getting older and older underground. So I just, my, my greatest concern for this was we're gonna get to a point where we don't have an option and have to do something. So that's why that was one of my, my greatest concerns with this.
So I'd like us to think in terms of, rather than just have philosophical goals, I think we need to assign budget numbers to, or like in my affordable housing goal was to maintain that $4 million a year. Because if you look at what that incentivizes, just about puts us on target for that 60 to 70 house, you know, incentive program. So I think that we need to put targets financially. Because we've talked for years about strategic planning, and we have our ideas, but if we don't put it in the budget, it doesn't happen. So that's where we have to, the rubber meets the road when you say, our current water main replacement budget is 600,000, say. We know we're behind. We know we just need to push it up to a million a year or whatever that is to increase, you know, putting your foot on the gas. It just takes money, and that's where we have to look at, are we sustainable? Last year, we couldn't do hardly any paving. The paving's getting so expensive, and we're falling behind on that as well as water mains, just because we don't put enough money into it. And that's just the honest truth, that if we really look at what we really should be doing each year and put a number on it, we're gonna know how far behind we are. And then you're ready to go to the voters and say, we're, we're falling behind. This is what we need to do, and have the information.
In this first, clarifying someatic clarification, you said 60 new homes, which you meant as units?
I did.
Okay. Because I think it's pretty important for us to recognize, we only have so much development left.
Yeah, and there's only 2,000 lots left, and they're all tough to build up.
Exactly. And so we have to be thinking in terms, I think, of rental. And that's what the, you know, the affordable housing study showed us, the last one that we did. And we've gotten even more in terms of rental units.
I agree totally. That's what I meant to say. I'm thinking big buildings and smaller.
On the sewer, hopefully.
Correct.
Because we have such a fragile environment.
So it's under the action steps of this, it does say DPW will consult it to develop and implement water main replacement plans. So I guess the question is, if we don't already have money in the budget for the consultant, does that want, do we want to make that one of our priorities, to add money to the budget to do that so that we know how much we need to spend every year? And we can come up with a plan, or we're missing all that. Do we have that in the budget already?
You know what, I'm not certain I need to look into that one.
Some kind of repair contingency modulate, I mean.
So I will, I'll, for discussion, I would like this as something that we want to keep in mind as one of our priorities, to find money for that consultation. Another broad goal was implement comprehensive waste management plan. I just, obviously I don't have time to think of it, it's very large. But there, but this was from the FY2226 plan. And it's an ongoing plan, very likely to require some capital planning, capital budget increases and planning. But that is something that, like I said, was from the, the last plan and was also brought up by several boards that we need to, to review and consider.
I could just interject, I think that we need to keep, just like we did with the affordable housing, we had a top goal, and right now it's discharge capacity. And that has got to be the number one priority. And it's a big budget consideration that's way outside of anything that we've considered. If we go with the outfall, we don't know the number yet because we just spent $95,000 to find out, hopefully, what that is a closure number. We were first thinking about 63 or 75 million, but we don't know, it could be much more. And that's kind of urgent, because we're up against it. We're looking at projects, I'm reaching out for sewer grants, and having us, having people come in and tell us, don't do it, because we need to save that capacity for affordable housing, that really is alarming that we're at this edge of, you know, this limit of capacity. So I think it's really a top priority, is to discharge, whether it's at the helm of person or an outfall, we really got to do that.
The test is already underway, is it still stretched, or we just totally forgot?
Yes, yeah, we have. So they've, the, the Water Quality Management Committee has spent a good bit of time evaluating all of the different options. And there is not even capital to develop the highest priority option.
And I must say, that, I mean, that, that really requires a strategic approach. Because if the project you're talking about that's being held up is an affordable housing project, it's a senior housing project, they're on Scotland Square. They're talking about holding that project up.
But that's for mechanical functionality, that's not really a discharge capacity.
But I get you. It's gonna be those sized projects where there's gonna be significant contribution to our collection system and our treatment facility and our discharge. We're getting behind on this is my point. And it's gonna slow up some of the strategic investment that we want to make, capital investment or incentives that we want to provide to the private developers.
It's a scary number, but we're gonna have to deal with it.
And I, I quite agree with you that I think that discharge challenge is something that needs to be addressed short-term. But we need to take a long-term perspective on the, on amortizing the cost, if you will, of whatever we invested.
So then there's some ongoing things that we're gonna mostly pull from the FY2226 plan that don't, that are strategic goals, but don't impact the budget. At least not now, and not directly. Next is health and public safety. Still have collaborating among departments to respond to substance use crisis, smoking alcohol, et cetera. Again, it's from the FY2226 plan, they both fancy and listed as, as our SMART goals. And so this one, this goal specifically is talking about adding clinicians to the town police department. We've kind of talked about this before. It would require assessing with the chief of police the needs of clinicians, which I know he, I talked to him about, I know we talked to others about. That means the costs associated with it, and then having, if we agree that it's something that we think is important and a priority, having Peter at that to the potential operating budget to show us what that would look like.
I could comment, I didn't even have that on my list, but after you brought it up, I thought, that is really timely, really, really urgent, especially given the hiring difficulty for the police right now, and their staff level is so low, that that kind of is something that could be urgent. Because it could take someone's burden off.
That kind of is urgent, yeah.
And I agree.
I mean, I agree, that kind of maybe should be on the list.
And when you, and when you do speak to the police chief, there are so many of their calls are related to mental health and substance use.
Yeah.
So.
Time consuming.
It is. And, and there's a certain level of skill as well.
Right. It changes the whole rules of how an officer approaches a scene. When, when you have to add the level of mental capacity of the person they're dealing with, it affects civil rights, it affects so many different things, and it adds liability to the police department and the town if those situations are handled inappropriately or without information to be able to back this up on. So I agree with you.
I think you did a great job.
Thank you for agreeing with me.
I think you've done a great job of managing it, but it takes up a lot of their time. And I think it could be a good investment.
And I, I really want to say, I agree, but Ed Dunn has been very sensitive to this issue for a long time. I mean, when we got into the opioid issues, he was very sensitive to the need to deal with the, you know, the human behavior aspect of this and not necessarily the criminal or civil enforcement, if you will.
And he has requested this. And then just, I just want to make sure that the board knows that this has come up, he's asked for this previously.
Is there a way we can prioritize that for the current budget plan?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm making note of everything that we want to prioritize. And then at the end, we'll review and make sure that we're on the same page of what our priorities are, and be able to present to us with all of our wants and desires that we have to coincide, and they all fit, which we'll do. But that, that piece will stay, we'll be there next time.
Are there, rather than cutting out on hiring of projects, if it could defer, might be less urgent, the water mains? Are there some kind of wish list of projects put on the job block that might be less critical?
So, help me understand the context of your question. So, you know, if we, if we're talking about capital projects and you want to, you want to be more aggressive on water, we can look at taking capital funds away from some other projects. That's, that's a possibility. But if you're talking operating versus capital, then we're mixing Murray versus that.
I'm thinking more in terms of like studies. The other day I was going through my stuff in my office, and I came upon a poster on studying, it's a book, it's about this, that kind of, geez, how much did it cost? Don't remember us taking any action on it. I'm just thinking in terms of, oh, look. I don't remember even where it came from, but just wondering if there are other things that were, have these kind of background study projects, stuff like that, that might be expensive that we're maybe not aware of.
Projects that aren't a priority, so we can move the money from those projects to projects that aren't.
Isn't kind of, that's what we're doing right now.
Yeah, I think.
Prioritizing, right?
As I'm understanding, yeah, as what we're prioritizing.
I'm just wondering if there are big books being published right now, or, or planning to be, that might not be urgent.
Maybe that's something that you could bring to us in the next meeting.
Remember, that couples into the coastal resiliency issue, and that's the sewer line that goes right there across the Trump River. And that's a collection, if you will, that could be rerouted. So it's mixed in with other priorities.
Or is this an older thing of, of the water quality? The houses around the pond have contributed to the climate water quality.
I know it is, but we also have the sewer line. And if that goes out, you know, that's all, it's whole. So we have to worry about that, and we can combine both of those, you know, as in, in the same solution, so.
I think the point is that if there's other things out there that we have said we want to spend money on, but now we realize it's not a priority.
Yeah.
And that's, and Peter needs to let us know what's out there.
And I don't expect that, though.
Yeah.
But we do say that, you know, if we're gonna be adding these things, looking at ways to try to enhance staffing and so forth without doing overrides this year. Just looking at, if there's any fat we can tread anywhere, it's not gonna hurt. I don't know if that's even happening.
I would, you know, I would suggest the most practical first-step approach would be to look at the proposed capital spending for next year. Do you see anything on the proposed capital spending that you want to back off on so that we can do other things? But then I, you know, as, again, as part of that exercise, I just want to make sure that, that we're all sort of clear on what, you know, why we might be looking to cut back on the capital plan. What that would do is free up free cash, it would free up one-time money to do some other one-time project, right? It doesn't free up money to hire staff.
Right. And that's, that's the other thing that concerns me, reoccurring revenue, reoccurring. So we need to really be careful of that.
One more thing on that point, and remember what the cost of the living, I mean, you know, inflation. It means that when we defer a year, the cost goes up, and who knows at this point, it's probably gonna go up around 7%. Just a one year.
And that's fair. That's a really good point, Sam, because when we think about those things of delaying.
I was thinking more about in-house studies that are coming out of the operating budget, if there are, and I wouldn't be aware of that, but just curious if there's.
It doesn't sound like you're talking about the capital projects.
Right, no, not capital projects.
I think we just need to hear that, because, because it does go back to Sam's point.
That's an important clarification.
Yeah, because I was a little confused at first, but then the more you track, I think I got what you're saying.
We know about the.
Right. But can we just move on to, and this one is really important to me in terms of, and Doug, I don't think this was one of yours, but I have a great thought here, but removing our public safety employees from civil service, that to me is a priority as well. Because what I keep hearing from the chief is that if we were out of that, there are people I could bring on, very quickly. So I don't, it, it's not a huge thing in terms of what we need to do, but I think you had suggested sending a letter, I think that came from you. And I think we need to do that. I think the board needs to send a strong letter. I have talked to both David Vera and Dylan Fernandez about moving this, because this is, this is important. I don't think we need to say a lot more about that, but I, I do think it's also a reason as well.
So I, I also did listen to your potential budget implications. I don't actually know if there's operating budget implications. there's operating budget increases for new hiring process, once we are moved to civil service, we have to have a hiring process. So I, my assumption is that there is going to be probably not a significant, but some sort of budget increase that goes along with this, and so again, we're making a lot of assumptions here. I assume that is going to be part of the police's operational request, is monies for that, and so when we look at their budget, we want to make sure that if there is additional money, if they're asking for, for a hiring process or something that has to do with, they need something now that they no longer have for civil service, that is the priority that we need to support.
Well, they have already assembled that and chief worked with the unions to develop, what's going to replace civil service, they have a framework, that's for advancement and so forth, I believe that's completed.
Yeah, there are, the procedures that the union is interested in terms of, you know, what are the criteria and what's the process, that has all been developed, but there are costs associated and there are choices to be made and it ties into this whole recruitment. So the approach historically has been that someone who wants to be a police officer pays for the cost of the civil service exam, or for non-civil service in other communities, often they'll pay for the cost of the exam to, you know, to be an applicant for a police officer in a non-civil service public safety department. But as we struggle more and more to recruit, we need to, you know, remove the barriers for people to apply, so there are potentially budget implications for, you know what, let's make this free for people to take our exam and so that we need to cover the costs.
So are we, is there something already in the contract that the town is paying now based on the fact that the town voted to take us out of civil service?
So.
Are we already paying something?
Yeah, so, but what we're, what we're paying is.
Higher pay.
Higher pay.
That's okay, but what I'm, my point is, we're already paying, there's something baked into the contract for us to be out of civil service, so the town is paying for something that we're not getting, I guess that's my point.
The benefit of our, we are getting it, we get the support of the union.
Yes or no, we're still in civil service, is my point, so, no, not at all, and I'm not saying that, what I'm saying is, we're paying for something that the state is not allowing us to fulfill that by keeping us in civil service when the town is very clear. So that's, I don't want to belabor that point because I think it's pretty clear, so I apologize for taking that time.
And I appreciate you, the additional cost to incentivize it, that it makes sense. Maybe if we're going to put them to the academy for free, that maybe send a two or three year deal to stay on and not take off the first year.
I think those are issues that will be committed by, so I don't think we should discuss that.
So the next one is, again, addressing the ongoing issues of addiction and substance use disorder, collaborating with nonprofits and other organizations. So what came out of this goal is the idea that we would support the health of human services in collaboration with the town police department, look at where our gaps are in services that we offer here in town and find collaboration. So a quick side note, I went to an event post by Karen, which is an organization similar to Gosmo, they're trying to get more into this area and on the Cape, and so they, I mean, the work that they do is amazing, they have, tell Peter, they have tests where you can do a cheap swab and find out if you're sixteen times more likely to develop an opioid addiction in the future, which would be very helpful for doctors to have in a hospital here before they prescribe these things to someone who had a knee surgery, you know, so they can give them something else if they know that they might be more likely to have opioid addiction in the future.
So it's in your DNA to.
Your allele.
Somewhere.
To some extent, yes.
Right, some.
But it could be a useful tool, is my point, and so partnering with our health and human services to get those things either into our offices or work with Cape Town Healthcare. So this general, this general goal is to work on that. There's obviously some potential budget implications, maybe to operating budget, maybe to hiring additional staff, there might be some costs associated with partnership with local and regional organizations. So my thought on this one is that it's important, maybe not necessarily for FY twenty-four, maybe FY twenty-five to give us, us, meaning the town and the Susie and other people some time to work through what we need and put that in the future budget, but I thought it was important enough to, because it was, pieces of this were in the twenty-two twenty-six plan and both Nancy and I listed it as some of our goals.
Yeah, this is another high one on the list because I think it contributes to the attrition in both police and fire department because it's like a difficult part of the job and it's not pleasant to show when they have to go and revive people and it's not as, as I understand it, a lot of times you see people over and over and I think it might be kind of demoralizing from causing attrition, not just in town, but maybe just lead the whole job.
So this is something that unless there's other thoughts, is a priority, again, in our strategic plan because it's a five-year plan, but perhaps for the FY twenty-five budget instead of the FY twenty-four budget.
I would agree.
The last specific one here is commit to a six fire station model in the meantime that a Northwest combination station is potentially built and operational. This is from the FY twenty-two twenty-six plan and with some edits made by both Nancy and I. So specifically, to be able to staff all of our fire stations, which we know is going to have a significant impact on operating budget, we talked about this quite a bit in the last strategic planning session, so we, I know, since we spent a lot of time on this and we do have several more things to go through, if we do agree that this is a priority, then we will ask Peter to come back to us and show us where this would fit in the budget, if it doesn't fit in the budget, what our options are for potential override and timing.
Will that be soon, so that we can say, just this upcoming budget?
Yeah, I want to have some more specific information for you for October first. You know, I don't want to, I'm not going to have a, you know, a complete budget so that you can sort of pull things in and out of a complete FY twenty-four budget on October first, but I will have some rough numbers and so, you know, what I'll be asking from you, I guess, coming out of the October first meeting is, you know, maybe what we can do is to put, identify FY twenty-four budget impact items and then if I can get direction from you as to what the rough priority ranking of those is, I will, I'll bring some numbers to that conversation so you're not, you know, so it's not just completely a blind conversation with no idea of what the costs are, so I'll try to put some rough numbers to those items, but then you give me your priority ranking and then I have a couple of months to work with staff and figure that out, figure out the FY twenty-four budget balance, look at, you know, are there things we can do, move things around within the budget to try to accomplish these priorities and then the final product will be the town manager's proposed budget this summer.
At the end of the meeting, maybe we can talk about potential resources because we didn't really get into that last.
Commention, this is quick, I think we have to recognize that none of those stations is fully staffed a hundred percent of the time, the chief has to move people around and resources and, so it's not a static model and essentially the question is, the six station model provides us with reserve that can be drawn on whenever it's needed in another part of town, and I think that point is about to be made when objections come to the cost that we simply, well, of having six stations.
I think there's a argument to be made that makes no difference if it's six or five, because if we go back to five later, same number of staff.
Right.
Talked about that a few times.
Exactly.
So again, as I'm making notes on each of these, we, so far all of them, that we agree are priorities and then pass along to Peter to prepare for document number one, you know, we specifically look at operating budget. So the next section is management of coastal natural resources and infrastructure. So there is a management of beaches, a developed ten-year beach management plan, again, partially from FY twenty-two twenty-six plan and partially from Scott's goals. And so in talking to Peter, I did learn that there is a request to update the beach management plan included in the capital plan already, and so this time, the potential timeline to have on here, fall twenty-four, is probably pretty good because it's going to take us some time to get back, to get the information back from this beach management plan to then, you know, how it's going to impact the operating budget for the future. So I think we, well, I should say, I think we agree. I would like to think that we should agree that we want to wait for this plan to be updated before we allocate the monies to doing any projects there, so this might be an FY twenty-five, depending on maybe.
Because some of that may be covered in it, if we just travel ground twice.
One thing I did, my wishlist for beaches was to reconsider the enterprise fund for beaches. Beach department used to take in their own money and manage their own funds, and maybe it's in on the beach, they just call it a local contractor, trucking to Barnes and Lynch, go out to wash stand down and spread it out, and have beaches ready to go and so on. And we don't have that kind of flexibility now, beach department requests the DPW and they're still spread, spread out, have so many projects and so many jobs to do.
But Doug, isn't that like light maintenance though, we're looking at a more concrete solution or deterrent for beach nourishment and to say.
It's the old management of the old, like the parking lot in Chapel Point, it was recently determined that it was public safety hazard having all those cars queued up, and they wanted to move the railings back, it just hasn't, it's been a few years, over course it's slowed everything down, but I just don't think that they have the ability to manage the way they used to.
But I'd like to know the history, I'd like to know the history on why they had it and they didn't, and you're asking for it now, so I'd like to know a little bit more about the enterprise fund and how that works and why it's shifted, because if you're asking to shift it back, I need more of the history compared to times.
My only comment would be that it's a zero-sum game, so if, if we make the beach, if we create an enterprise fund for the beaches, that doesn't, doesn't really create any additional operational flexibility, it could be a way to move more dollars toward beach maintenance, but those dollars are being removed from the operating budgets, so it's, there's no free lunch there, there's no new revenue, you're just taking money from one place to put it to another place.
But is that going to become a beach management plan?
The beach management plan is not going to address the financing, it's just going to address what is, and maybe, and maybe, I don't know, I don't know if it's going to have the cost, and what I saw of the dollar note, it may not have the cost, it may just be more about what is it that needs to be done.
I'd be interested to know if it does open up opportunities for more grant applications.
It does not, enterprise funds, no. It's just a, it's, it's just a funding mechanism, it's just a financial cookie.
I thought I, maybe I'm wrong about this too, but did we create an enterprise fund for another town department because of the.
The enterprise fund was to cover the sewer?
We don't have any enterprise funds at the moment, and again, I, you know, there are grant, there are different grants available to public agencies versus nonprofit agencies, but I've never seen any that says depending on whether you're funded with a general fund or enterprise fund, you're going to be eligible for a different grant. Okay, I'll pick that as an issue.
Next, we have implement recommendations for coastal resilience, the action committee final report, from FY twenty-two twenty-six plan, and then I also have this as one of my goals, specifically, one of the most significant, I think, recommendations is developing comprehensive policy. So this is just some excerpts from the policy, not necessarily for us to include these specifics in our strategic plan, but I wanted to give them as examples of what's in there. So the idea would be that we reviewed, the policy recommendations have DPW and potentially the coastal resilience committee look again and make sure that the way these policies are written are best for our community, might be something that if we do decide to implement a sustainability director, something like that, we'll look at as well, in any case, I wanted to leave it there because I'm including those policies in our select board policies we're looking for, but at this time, there's no budget implications for that.
Could I just come in on that, so we had the committee, do they work, I mean, we had a lot of work before us and I wondered if, and Peter, I guess this is a really kind of question for you, is should we be creating a town coastal resilience team, say somebody from DPW, some planning, you know, a group that's, where we try to lead to discuss coastal resilience, even if we don't have that sustainability director in place, start kind of gearing up towards it, is that reasonable?
The staff position you're talking.
Yeah, because I don't envision this being a committee job going forward. We've had two big, huge reports, ten, fifteen years ago, eight years ago, now we've got the new one from the coastal resilience, which really ties it all together, now all that's left is to do the work, I mean, that's more of a staff, you know, department type of director, so I tend to know of this.
Jump in, we looked before you asked, but another thing I do have on this, implement coastal resiliency plan, and that's, that is going to take a lot more than what I think we have the capacity to do right now.
So, so this first goal on page nine is to develop a comprehensive policy, so that's not about implementation. And then the next, to highlight it on page ten, implement, implement the coastal resilience plan, so I think what Doug is talking about is, is how do we implement the plan?
Right.
And yeah, I think the approach that you're describing is, makes sense, I think it, in order to make any progress on it, it's going to need to be supported with substantial consulting money, you know, consulting group or other group, or another group, you know, I would see that group working with the consultants and looking at the existing plan and then coming to a number of boards, right, it's a select board, but not just the select board, select board waterways, conservation and saying, you know, are they, you know, are there the next couple of projects that we think the community might want to take action on? These are, you know, you know, these are, these are big, horny problems and, you know, one project that's one thousandth of the problem is, you know, takes many years and many studies and lots of, you know, data.
There's also another element to it, which is not just specifically big projects, which is actually dealing with the democratic issue, like right now, the permitting, we could have a letter go off to our senators and governor even, everyone to say, this permitting process is broken, and I have a friend who works in California and they have it even worse and projects come and go and never get done, and this permitting process is so bogged down that by the time you get the permit, it's too late and the projects change and the coast is moved. So I think, I would love to see us prioritize the things that we can do now, a lot of the recommendations in the coastal resilience report requires a panel board, zoning board consideration for, you know, redistricting coast, that's something that could be worked on without money, but just, you know, like work made in some consulting, of course, but the, I think we'd petition the state right now to consider whether or not the permitting process we have is practical going forward, because I see the army corps benching areas, it's like they backed themselves out of the bridge business with the, and out bridges. I think they might be willing to back themselves out of this coastal planning if we ask them. I think if we can streamline the permitting process and that stuff that we can work on now just by sending letters, asking for action from legislators, I think there's some stuff we can do without being afraid of the big ticket items.
So can I ask, in keeping in context, being short-staffed and being difficult to hire and our staff currently being stretched a bit thin, I like, I mean, I understand the idea of having a group or committee that goes and plannings and zoning board does, does all these things, there was also a recommendation at some point about a coastal resiliency coordinator person.
Right.
Is that something that you think would be, would that position do some of the things you're thinking about and would?
Absolutely, but I, I also put restraint on myself to say that maybe the sustainability director could be pulled into next year's budget and then the coastal resilience person budget afterwards, because I don't expect to hire two high-level people the same year because I think it would be conflicting and disorganized, but I think the first year the sustainability director comes on, they're going to advise us, we need coastal resilience person, because they can't do it, I mean, I'm just expecting that's probably going to happen, and then the sustainability director can go back to doing what the original position is, but maybe they can be helpful in the first year, you know, on the periphery of coastal resilience, but I think it's going to be a town staff-driven response.
So it's, we can implement coastal resilience plan and stay in our strategic plan and maybe for FY twenty-six or twenty-seven, which is still within the strategic plan, we can place coastal resilience position as a priority as a fellow's man to add to the budget in the future, is that what I'm hearing?
No, I'd like it to be sooner, but yeah. Well, I'd like it to be sooner, but yeah, within the restraints of the budget. I mean, that'd be practical to think we can do it.
Okay. So we've listed and then.
But I don't want to forget, we need to think in terms of a life expectancy of the benefits of some of these projects too. Because this level rise is essentially going to dominate. Maybe we shouldn't be investing in some of these. You just mentioned it in California. It took so long to do some of the projects that they dropped off because the priorities changed.
Right.
And I think we have to ask that question now in terms of what we're going to do. I'm all for protecting private property. But there is an issue that some, some things are likely to overwhelm all of the, you know, interventions that we try to take short-term.
Well, that's true. And if you really read into the coastal resilience and the action committee report, in the end, they're saying, think carefully before you spend money.
Exactly.
Because it's money that's not coming back. So, you know, they make a good point. And of course, at the time, I didn't want to hear it, but it's really true. But there are projects that we're going to run through. We want to do the Minot Bridge project and look at all the delays that we have. We got a case, a case study to make our case for the fact that projects are just not practical in the coast. It's changing so fast that the six-year permitting process just doesn't work.
Let's keep going.
Doctor Keller, can I just ask on the, you know, we had, we had the town meeting article petitioning a sustainability resilience position. And at some point, I, I would like to hear from the board, you know, how important that is for you, which we can talk about on October first. But the other, the other piece is clarity on what your understanding of that position is. And if you're not clear, you know, how we're, how we're going, how we want to get clarification on that. And I hope this is the right time to talk about it.
That is the last section. So we've got, we've got organizational effectiveness and then water conservation. So what do we need to say? So next, organizational effectiveness and community engagement. So broad goal is making municipal services easy to navigate for the public, something that Scott, Nancy, and I all put in our goals. And I believe that you might have also mentioned it at the meeting as well, as well. So we know we want to edit the town website. It's not realistic for, I think feasible for us to tear down the town website, go with a new one, but rather make the one that we have better. And it's very easy for those of us, I've been navigating for a while, people in IT, to understand the website. So what's, what I'm proposing and what has come out of some of the goals that I've, or some of the steps that I received is perhaps creating a working group of town members, such as someone like Mark. Or, you know, anybody who goes to the town website at some point, along with someone from IT, literally put computers in front of them and say, find this on the website and see how people navigate the website. What do, what do people who are not in IT and not familiar with municipalities, how do they go to a website and try to navigate it? And that will help us in IT figure out how to better navigate, how to better structure the website to make it more user-friendly. This I don't expect will significantly affect the operating budget. Perhaps if we find that we need to add plugins or something minimal for it. I don't think it's significant enough that we need to spend a lot of time thinking about.
Give them a little tutorial at the beginning of it, where it's a short video to help you navigate something simple that isn't going to cost a lot of money. Where to go.
Exactly.
Do this next. I mean, for some people like Mark, they would say, oh my God, we can buy this. But there are other people that I think would really appreciate the fact that it led you to a point where you say.
Right.
I mean, it just needs a certain.
Doesn't sound like.
As you're saying, I agree. Sounds like a search engine. A refined search engine.
Yeah.
These are the kinds of things that I would like to see about it.
Exactly.
Some, right. And I don't think we need to spend a lot of time on this because I think we need to throw this ball out to a, a committee of users and at different levels of ability and that kind of factor.
Doesn't sound strategic to me. It's more tactical.
But tactically, right. And I think that also, I think we've had a history of just saying, department heads, you're on your own, do your own websites. So some departments are more functional than others, you have to imagine that IT capacity. And I think what we need is like a dedicated person, or not maybe dedicated, but a person who's in IT, maybe it's already there, but not being used, to help these department heads to get their, to put their website more functional. So I think that's just something that can be probably fixed. Maybe our new IT directors are already working on that, I don't know. But I, I tell you, the search feature is just, no, it doesn't work for me. I tell everybody that asks me, how the heck do you navigate the town website? I say, don't just use Google search for what you look for on a website. And that actually works pretty well.
So the reason I thought this was a strategic plan is because making our services easier to navigate is, is a strategic goal. This was just a specific way that I thought of that.
I see it as strategic as well.
We can achieve that goal. The next broad goal is fill the town vacancies, which may seem obvious, but I think important enough for us to continue keeping in our strategic plan. I wanted to, I asked, I want to ask Peter to specifically talk about the DEI officer position and where we are on that. And that's why it's highlighted, because I know that that may have budget implications in addition to what we would normally put in the budget, the operating budget for a position.
I also want to ask the question, where are these positions posted? Because CFO was posting, correct?
Correct.
I couldn't find it. I could not, and again, this could be because I couldn't find it on our website. I could not find that posting. So I just want to make sure that we're, that we're getting these up and out as quickly as we can. But I don't want to also, I want to go back to the DEI.
Yeah.
So if you could, Peter, we are with the, with the position, with the job description and then some of the things that I haven't talked about.
Great. So with regard to the DEI officer position, I had a couple of conversations with the chair and vice chair about the position and restructuring of the position. One of the concerns that, that I had, and that was shared by the three of us, is that the previous job description that was shaped largely by the petitioners who put forth the petition, town meeting warrant article, really was asking one person to come in and work on diversity, equity, and inclusion issues for the entire town of Alamo, with no staff in the budget. And I didn't feel that was a recipe for success, and I think we agree on that. I then, with, with the support to modify the job description, I worked with a human resources consultant that we've retained in the absence of the HR director to rework that job description. And that individual that I'm working with, Rachel Glister from God HR, happens to have some expertise in DEI. So she and I reworked that job description. And then Anjali met with a couple of community members, and I met with, with Sandy Van Silva, who was probably the lead petitioner on this article, along with Sayana Mausi, who was a recent resident of the town of Alamo and has expertise on these issues and students and consultant work from the school department. And we went over the job description. And what came out of that was a desire to increase the pay grade, which the, which the board had talked about and mentioned months ago, as something that, you know, maybe needed in order to attract a qualified person. But also to elevate the stature of the position within the organization by having a higher pay grade associated with it. So, so Rachel had, we, the, sorry, I need to provide some context. The town's pay classification system, so we have a pay grade for every position. And that's something that, you know, most communities have, and it's important as a matter of equity. And also it's important for reducing liability to discrimination lawsuits. Because if you don't have a quantified, objective way to determine what the pay grade of every position is, then you open yourself up to, well, my position is graded low because of some protected category, race, gender, age, whatever it is. So this new job description was scored. It came out one grade higher than it was, which is probably lower than what some advocates might want. But I, you know, within the confines of our system, I'm not sure how to, how to get further up. You, you run into challenges, and I'm sorry, getting into the weeds on this. You know, we could easily increase the pay classification if instead of requiring a bachelor's, we required a master's. And instead of requiring five years of experience, we require 10 years of experience. But then you run into a couple of problems. One, one of the DEI sort of barriers is education level. So if you require a master's or a PhD, you know, only people of certain, you know, you're creating an economic challenge, a barrier to people who are going to be qualified for that position. And then on the practical level, there just aren't a ton of people that are super qualified with very high levels of education and experience that are going to need for this position. So in order to move forward, we would need to, with this change in pay grade from grade eight to grade nine, we would need town meeting approval. So we also have, sorry, last piece, we talked about the compensation study. So this is one of those positions that's being reviewed in the compensation study. So this, the entire pay plan that this person is in is likely going to be adjusted upwards in the FY twenty-four budget. So that will again improve our ability to recruit a qualified person. So the suggestion is that we put off on filling the position until July first. So that we, we would be able to, if we, town meeting approved the new pay grade and the new pay rates in April, we would be able to advertise it right away in April and funding available on July one.
Oh yeah. Probably a question, did you also talk about a budget for that person, even though there's not an office for it?
Right. So an expense budget would need to be considered as part of the FY twenty-four budget.
That question.
Absolutely.
Now, has there ever been any considerations to combining the HR and the DEI office into one department to be able to cut back on, say, staffing, to be able to increase the, the, the number for the department head compensation? Because it all kind of falls into, at some point, it's going to overlap throughout departments. Within town, we have mixed ethnicity families that could, all of it. I think that combining those departments could streamline the process and maybe save us a little money and be able to compensate department heads. Or make an argument that cross-rated, or cross-trained, or cross-educated people would serve us better, justify the money that they ask for at town meeting. Just, huh? I'm not running the meeting.
Just saying quickly that the human resources, that's the hiring person.
Well, he's it, now he's everything now.
No, we're just, we're just saying that we've always struggled to get our hires in order. You need one person doing it. It's always a challenge to get that done quick enough that we don't lose the person. We got a lot of people apply for jobs and then get a job somewhere else because they're going to keep it up. So I don't think this would, just personally.
That's why my suggestion is, let's try something that may work instead of something that isn't working. So new considerations for that. And that's what we're doing here. We're trying to put it as a strategic, you know, a strategic look at things or a different way to compensate people more greatly and combine tasking to be more effective.
I'd be interested there, Peter, because I just threw that out there because I, I heard that that from people who had applied.
So to Scott's point, there's certainly, you're absolutely right, there's a lot of intersection and overlap between what the DEI officer position will do and what the HR will do, the HR director. And I don't think here's, you weren't suggesting.
The same person.
Yeah, just suggesting one person.
Combining the department and so, so the money spent to run the department.
Right.
With different department, co-department head.
Yeah. I just misunderstood, excuse me. I think there could be some efficiencies there for sure.
Like make up from the bottom of the budget.
Yeah, yeah. So that, that's an interesting thought, and I think that has merit to explore. You know, we want to, we don't want, I don't know that we want to put either the DEI officer under the HR director or vice versa.
No, no, I'm saying co-department head in singular.
Right. So it's really, so I see a managerial efficiency opportunity. You know, right now, we have the one position. I think the next step is an expense budget for DEI to bring in training, consulting, you know, maybe a little, a little bit of money for some food to bring people to events, because that's an important part of, you know, getting folks to participate in things that aren't having the tradition that would seem as a core part of their work. You know, going forward, if we were to talk about adding more staff into DEI, you know, we're certainly thin deducts point in staffing and HR. So, you know, bringing in a part-time person that might support both HR and DEI.
Administrative, administrative position.
Right.
Handle both.
I'd love to be able to say that we, you know, the existing HR staff can support the DEI position, but I, I really don't see that they have any engine.
It would have to be clearly delineated, however, because you can see how a DEI issue could quickly become an issue in HR, correct? So, so those could be moneyed fairly easily. You'd have to keep them pretty delineated, and you would have to keep them on the same level.
Oh, yes.
It would also require, and this might be, I had a look at the job listing, I apologize, that the, the person who is doing the HR director position has experience or an interest in incorporating DEI into their, into their work.
It is absolutely critical that the HR director be well-trained and fully engaged in DEI work. But not in terms of realistic expectations about qualification, or HR director, that's.
This is just purely conceptual on my.
Yeah, no, I misunderstood the initial thought.
Yeah. Okay, let's keep going. Great. So the staff vacancies, again, they're already in the budget. However, as Peter just described, may impact the operating budget if we, if town meeting approves the DEI officer budget. The DEI officer pay increase and that, and those types of things. So the next broad goal, general departmental support. Nancy, both you and Scott put in departmental audits, and I know you've mentioned that before. So if it's okay, I'd like to let you take a moment and explain the operation of the departmental audit.
What that would look like?
What that would look like.
So I just think about the schools and how, you know, when you think of special education, you think of the different departments that, that somebody comes in and takes a look and assesses what their strengths are, what their challenges are, and what they need for support. And I think that doing that with town departments would be incredibly helpful. And I started to think about it even though when I was talking with, with some of his challenges in his department, what his department value is. I also think that moving forward with a town manager, for a town manager that helps support that position, helps support that person to be successful, to have some really solid information from an outside lens would be really helpful in helping the person be successful. So if this person comes in, they see, okay, well, here's, here's some challenges in one of my biggest departments here. Here's where they can really well, and here's where I get to think about supporting them. And I just think it's a good way to, to take a look in, in terms of planning, whether the department's support with this, in terms of project staffing. I think it's a good way to support our departments.
Thank you. So for budget implications, to clarify, I wasn't sure if, if this type of audit would be a one-time audit or maybe something on the capital budget or an operational budget for an initial audit and an ongoing, an ongoing audit or.
I would think, to start, I think it would be an initial, you know, you could kind of get a report, you could take a look at what, what we need to do to support the departments, and then we'd have to decide in five years we need to do it.
Similar to what distinction has already did, right? I think it is an organizational.
Yes.
Consultant to, I think you've got a couple of deficiencies, we recommend a couple of positions, and some things we're recommending. Some of them they adopted, or most of them now, some they were resistant to.
Right. But I think it's a good way to, to take a look at the departments, how they function, their efficiency, effectiveness, and how to support them. Because we have people doing a lot of work.
Yes, ma'am. You know, I, while I agree with most of the presidents, we're all the same thing. I think that, you know, an initial set of audits and then overlapping periodic audits, how audits help us measure how much better we're doing and how we can, we may have to adjust to it. And the personal experience gives me this insight with the business that, that I help to operate. It also lets your employees know that they're going to have at some point periodically a way to. a way to be able to contribute to, you know, the motion and the adherence of rules and procedures and questions can be asked and answered periodically. And they know that that's coming at a certain point and it helps them keep leaning in. That was my, my part of that.
I think that makes sense. I don't, I don't disagree with that. I guess I just thought in terms of budget.
No, no, I understand.
I would want it to start with fun, but it also affords employees the opportunity to give their full attention to what they said. And that, to me, helps people own their part of that.
And management, with respect to how we do it, management goes without, you know, with exit interviews and all of this. We go with excellent companies that we trust, that will give us a clear depiction of what, what they see. But the management has to trust their, their assessment of what's going on and not try to be involved or micromanage or whatever. And then the management team sits back and looks at it, and that's where they start to underline it. That's where we direct our department heads to concentrate their efforts. Could end that.
Right.
But I think it's a, it is one of the most important tools that we have where I work. This is a very large company, and I think it would be beneficial.
So Nancy, you mentioned that the schools are this, so one of the action items I have here is, well, I have HR manager, which I know we don't have. So I guess that'd be Peter for right now, to research and provide us with options for private firms to conduct that audit.
Yes.
So I was looking at the schools first.
A school can be, it's more state, the state produces it because you have to. For example, in terms of special education, you do their audits and then you have to create a plan to show how you improved it. So no, we, this, I just use that as my example. I can sort of find money to watch somehow.
You mentioned the steamship authority, so I'm just thinking of where we get.
Where do we find it?
Where do we find it?
MMMA.
So, yeah, if I could, so the, you know, the town has done management studies for the departments in the past. So we could, you know, we could go back to those, the consulting groups that have done those, if you like. The most recent one I'm aware of was, I believe, was community development, the inspection services department. That was done in two thousand seventeen. There was a fire management study that was done before that. I think both of those were done by the Matrix Group. And Sam's point is a good one, if you, there are firms that do this sort of management consulting that advertise the MMA media. So that's certainly a place that we could look to. And so I just want to clarify in terms of timeline, you know, we would be funding. So this is, this happening to be a funding. So I don't know if you want to, you know, put some money into this as part of the November town meeting and the non-capitalized, it hasn't surfaced yet, or do you want to defer that for the April town meeting?
Any idea how much we're talking about?
You know, I have in my head, and I think this is from a study that we did in Yarmouth. So that was, you know, probably would have been ten years ago, that it was like fifty thousand dollars for one department. So that was ten years ago. So, you know, it's not, if you want a, you know, it depends on the scope of the study, obviously. If you really want them to get into the details of the operations, you know, you're going to need some.
I think it would be, pardon me, but I think it would be important to do so sooner than later. We have a lot of big decisions to make coming up and we need to know what the playing field is prior to making those decisions. There could be things, good and bad, that would come into our decisions that we have to make and that the new town manager, he or she, whoever it may be, I think it'll be important sooner than later. I think that it would be an important request to make as soon as possible for money. And I don't, I can't see anybody with all that's going on with staffing and, and public, public input about, you know, where we are with our staffing and all of that, that, I can't think anybody wouldn't appropriate money at least to get this thing started with respect to audits and get some questions answered. As a taxpayer, I would certainly support it, so.
I'd say probably that, push it if we can, but she's, how many departments do we have? There's a pretty significant budget for that, it's a simple budget.
So I think if we say that this is a priority, then that's something that Peter will come back to us on October 1st and tell us, if we have a general idea of amount by there that we can do, digging ourselves off of people, you know, a general idea of what it would cost.
And whether or not there's different levels of scrutiny that we might consider.
Well, you have, you have departments that are lacking right now in staffing and department heads. I mean, I would identify those as a priority with, we're not holding staff or department heads in these departments. We continue to lose them, or I would certainly start there if it was me.
Well, I mean, that's what I'm saying, you could do a high-level overview. Probably the majority of what they're going to tell us is they're short of forty people, they're short of thirty, you know, whatever it is, without, you know, really diving into the budget specifically of how they're managing the department, but just the general overall condition at the staffing levels, maybe we could be, something we can do more quickly and less expensively, give us the basic overview of where we're at. I don't know if that's a lot.
Well, I would certainly want more than that before I made a decision that was going to affect the town's management going forward for X amount of years. I'd want to have as much information before I made that vote or a hire.
So you want to prioritize the departments you want to.
I certainly, I certainly would, the ones that are lacking now.
Yeah.
I mean, right up to the CFO, I mean, all of those, we need to know why people leave, you know, sustainably.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So if I could get some further clarification. So this would not be, in terms of what I'm, the budget priorities that we're going to talk about on October 1st, you know, I need to be really clear about dividing one-time capital versus operating. So this is one time, the study money, the management studies, audits is one-time capital. So I wasn't planning to bring priorities of future capital spending to the October 1 conversation. What I'm, the guidance that I'm seeking coming out of that meeting from the board is about the operating budget, recurring opportunities.
They could work into that, though, because once we do it, we're probably going to work. Just like with the cap, we're going to up to your.
So, I mean, and I'm not sure where we're leading off with this conversation. If we want a management study of all departments, then, you know, I should, we'll probably need to get quotes in, you know, this, hundreds of thousands of dollars.
I would certainly, I would certainly want to do some of that prior to making the decision on a new town manager or assistant town manager. I mean, we have deficiencies that have been identified and we have vacancies that are apparent. I mean, we have a very big, and I'm not, I'm not preaching to anybody. I'm, I'm strictly one person with one opinion. But we have things that need to be addressed before we make another large decision in this town. So as much personally for me, as much information as I can get before rendering that vote, that one of five votes, I feel like that's very important. It's paramount for me to have as much information on the next big decision we make in this town. Now, if that means going to the voters and asking for that money, the people that don't want to give up that money obviously don't care enough about it. The people that do, then, then, I mean, that's where I stand on this and I won't ever back off of that. I don't think we should make another huge decision for this town that's going to impact the people here for a long time before we have all the information and why we're struggling at certain positions now. I mean, if I had said, I'm not, I apologize for being so passionate about it, but I mean, that's why we're all here.
I'm just curious about, I mean, if we're going to put the brakes on hiring until we get a study, it's going to be a while before we can get that. We're going to wait till the town meeting to get approval for funds and then wait till the study's completed.
Doug, we need to get people in place on our, on our basic functions to run this town. Do you want to set whoever the next person is up with, saddled with filling all these positions and not knowing why or how or what the avenue was to do that?
I'm just curious if you're proposing that we wait on hiring.
We don't have to wait on hiring.
I don't even know why the timeline has come up. I mean, I think she was prior.
We don't have to wait on hiring, like, like the state.
Oh, I thought that's what you were saying, you know what?
No, 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 we're trying to gain information for the next person that comes in here as well.
But we don't want to delay hiring the critical.
We want to have the process in motion done to get that information to us.
Okay, but I don't think that we're, let me just clarify and see if I'm off base here. Do you want to be moving forward with, with the audits concurrently, I think, with hiring the CFO, the HR director, the DEI?
Oh, I thought you were, I thought you were saying delaying on the critical decisions.
Yeah, no, they're concurrent, correct?
Right, it has to be taken out.
Yeah, it does, because we're down some of the people.
Right.
Can, let me say, I think you've got, you know, more accurate messages in this association. You started comparing us to other communities. You wouldn't be quite so paranoid.
I'm not saying I'm paranoid.
Quite honestly, you look at our tax rate, we must be doing pretty well because the quality of our town has not degraded that significantly. So I'm a little worried that you're looking at it very myopically in a very short time. And you say, well, what's our best management practice?
Short time, I've been paying taxes in this town for a long time and I, and I, my eyes are open, so it's not.
But have you been looking at the way other towns have managed their towns and compared it to ours and said, how effective has our management been? I think that's an important thing to recognize. You come into it as an outsider and not having looked at the broader perspective.
Who's an outsider?
If you haven't been involved in looking at talent, municipal management across the state of Massachusetts and New England, then you're coming in as an outsider.
So what is, what does another town have to do with?
I disagree with you, Sam.
What does our town in the level of management and the department insufficiencies have to do with the next town?
I, no.
I'm not paying taxes in another town, I'm paying them here.
I'm not arguing against having somebody come in and take a look at our, how we manage our town and giving us an outside, third-party perspective, all in favor of that. But to hold up and wait for something like that to be completed before we try to take care of the initial problem, the current problems that we have in hiring and filling position, I think is a mistake.
But I don't think that's what you're saying.
You're misunderstanding what I'm saying.
I don't think that's what he's saying, and I probably just cleared it up.
Sorry, I'll accept that.
Let's move on.
Yep.
Next goal we have is support volunteer committees and boards still from the FY twenty-two, twenty-six plan. I don't think this is necessarily going to affect operating budget much. There was some note about an annual social event for committee members that obviously didn't really happen during the COVID. So that may be something that if we see from a, if we agree that this is a goal, continue supporting our volunteer committees and boards with something like this, that may come up at some point as additional monies in the budget. So nothing, I think that we need to make a decision on, but I wanted to.
Could I go back a little bit? I just wanted to touch on something, Rita talked about it kind of last week, was that we're coming up on, we're going to be needing to hire a new assistant town manager at some point. I wonder if you had given any thought to comment about modifying the assistant town manager job description to include an element of community development? Because, you know, we tried to get a community development director and town meeting didn't agree with that.
Narrowly.
Right, but we tried twice. And I'm wondering if that is, does that make sense from your professional perspective?
From his own personal experience, because he has picked up a lot of those responsibilities.
Yeah, so I want to be very clear that I'm the assistant town manager right now and I may be, you know, next year, five years after that, depending on what happens with the town manager selection process. So I want to be very clear about that. But to your question, does it make sense to formally have the assistant town manager take on oversight of the community development department? That could very well work. You know, it would, I think it would need to be part of a larger reorganization because the role that I have played is, a lot of my time has been spent on union negotiations and oversight of the community services department. So, and I have coordinated, as Sam referred to. I was coordinating the monthly meeting of the land use or the development staff in addition to that. But because my time was limited, given all of the other obligations that I had, you know, there would be, there would need to be some changing of the responsibilities. Now, that could potentially, with a re-restruction of the finance director position, you know, maybe, maybe there's a way to make that work.
So are we restructuring the finance position?
I, not at this time.
You're just saying potentially.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just thinking of the charter and where it is, okay.
So if we think this is, this is of interest, what we can do in the, maybe just make the notes for putting the final draft list together, evaluating the job of assistant town manager to include community development coordinator responsibilities could be something that we want to continue to evaluate.
I'd just like to look at it, because I don't even know if it's a good idea, but I just throw it out there. Maybe not an official position, so if there is a little coordination, it could still be helpful as far as, you know, pushing the, you know, like when people come into town hall, they don't get a really good directive as to what businesses are allowed, what's not allowed. It's not really clear. We need to have a little more user-friendly, welcoming way to the business community. Kind of under oath to that.
All right, move on to energy and water conservation sustainability. This is not specific to something that we talked about last Saturday, but based on the feedback that we've collected, we will go better in this whole section, in this entirety area, excuse me. So, and the main thing in here that is, that did not come specifically from the previous strategic plans is hiring a sustainability director. And so I think Peter asked the question of what do we see that job as defined as? And that's why partially I put a timeline as a question mark and action steps as a question mark because if we're not clear on the definition of this job, how can we hire it for it? So I would like to just open a discussion on what do you think this job is supposed to do?
I think it's supposed to pay for itself and then some. Because, just for instance, what if we had a whole trailer full of low-flush, high-efficiency toilets, or even urine-averting toilets, we'll come to that later. But we're wasting a lot of fresh water, a lot of older houses have five-gallon toilets. It's just one thing to do. Maybe we should have a zero-interest law for conserving irrigation wells to take more pressure off of our water filtration capacity. Those are things that Ashley could say doesn't matter. And then what if that person said, put solar canopies up every parking lot on town hall property and don't wait till it's repaving? If we look at our current strategic plan, it says when revading, opportunities come. But then when the revading comes, it's often too much of a grunt to try to get a solar company to come in. I think we should skip out on worrying about waiting for paving and just dedicate ourselves to putting solar canopies up every parking lot down, that's a revenue source. And we don't have to put any money out to get, you can look at what they did at the Eric Lawrence, that's a pretty good example. I don't know how much they made every year, but there's a lot of production to get them to make there. And sustainably, you know, it's helping me a lot, so I think there's a lot of opportunities for being this, as well as helping people with grant writing.
Did, when the petitioner put forward the article for the sustainability director, well, we sent copies of job descriptions from other places. I don't look like I see that.
I wouldn't be surprised if we did, there was a lot of information shared to the point where, you know, it was kind of crunched to him also at the town meeting, and I'm not sure I really took that at all.
I, I saw her, yeah, and we could certainly reach back perhaps to Rosemary's or something, but I thought she did send them.
It does kind of ring a bell. I don't think I read a care for you, but I did see it.
She did say a couple of municipalities that do have sustainability and therefore job descriptions.
And I think she did.
I did say it, I think it's bringing in revenue.
Yeah, yeah, I, right, I go back and look at that.
I do remember that. So the question is, do we want to, do we want to adjust, do we think we want to adjust that significantly or we probably, I guess we need to look at it.
We need to go back and resend them to everybody.
My wish list is to put that into the twenty-twenty-four budget originally.
It was on, it was on the twenty-twenty-four budget as well. So for, for the sake of this conversation, we can put it in the twenty-four budget and then I'll, I'll find whatever Rosemary had sent us or whoever else has put something together and make sure it's sent out before the next phase of the agreement.
Can I, can I sort of throw out two questions that may, that may help us? And certainly I know that looking at some other sample job descriptions may help as well. But clearly, you know, one of the things I'm hearing is grant writing. And, you know, we could, this, you know, the skill set and pay for a grant writer. And, you know, we could, this, you know, the skill set and pay for a grant writer may be different from a skill set that of someone who has particular expertise in sustainability and is expected to be able to advise, you know, the town planner, the DPW, and the planning board about sustainability issues. So are we, you know, are we looking for a high-level expert in sustainability that's going to help sort of drive the way the organization operates and changes our planning zoning? Or are we more looking for someone who's going to write grants and push projects and get renewable energy and conservation projects funded? And bearing in mind, you know, one of the, I need to manage expectations in terms of, it may well be that we could hire a grant writer that could get, you know, a couple million dollars every year in grants, but we're going to struggle to implement them because we need.
Because I'm not sustainable.
Yeah, you need staff, you know, funding, grant, that grant funding is terrific, but none of these projects happen without such tasks.
I think that, I don't think it's as high-level expert that we need. I think we need somebody who does have grant writing capacity and a common sense approach to what's sustainable. I mean, I'm a carpenter, and I can say, like, putting solar canopies on parking lots is only a good idea.
But you do that, though, don't you, in stone?
I don't do that, I don't do that work. It's kind of a specialty.
I think part of this, we have to go back and see what the intention of town meeting was. It was voted, and it opened air.
I think that the grant writing was kind of a part of the sales pitch.
That's what I remember as well.
To get this position funded.
Yeah, to make sure that person would pay for themselves. So in the publications that I've presented about other towns that have sustainability, I don't know if it's the same title, but have something like this, the big pieces, not only do they pay for themselves, but they generate a lot more revenue or income or deductions for the town or whatever. So I remember that as a really big piece.
It does got to be in the job description. You know, you've got to bring in more than you take.
And I think anyone who has some building experience writing grants would be able to do that.
And that can be assured to town meeting, and I think they'll probably be accepting them. And if wealthy position, and whether or not they're super genius about sustainability numbers might be less important than that they are sustainable themselves.
Is there a mining requirement educationally for a grant writing position? I'm just asking a question.
Zero.
A minimum requirement.
Educate, well, you've spoken about educational levels.
Yeah.
Is there one?
I mean, we haven't written the job description, but from my background in reviewing and drafting these job descriptions, I would think you could talk about a bachelor's degree. You wouldn't, there wouldn't be, we wouldn't require someone to have a grant writing degree.
Oh, okay.
It would be probably just a combination of grant writing experience and bachelor's.
Okay.
As long as you can never get the form, you say they've done it quickly enough, you don't have to have any education.
That's a skill in itself.
Peter's point is a good one. That's not necessarily addressing some of the sustainability issues that we have in the town. You're just talking about getting a grant writer in to fund some of this stuff. Could not necessarily help us in managing the sustainability issues.
No, no, that's not my hope. I think the grant writing is, I don't know if it's half the job.
It's an important piece.
It's an important piece. But yeah, they got to have an eye on where we're not keeping up with, paying attention to wastefulness and missing opportunities.
I think part of this also knowing what kind of grants to go after. If thinking sustainability, going after a grant that would pay for low-flow toilets or pay to supplement the installation of solar canopies. Someone who has some sustainability experience would know where to look for those grants and know how to apply.
Exactly, it's going to have to be a mix.
But that second leg really is, when you get the grant, who implements the grant? And the issue that I see right now is if we had five grants come in tomorrow, we don't have the capacity or the staff to pull those projects off that these grants are paid for. And so I think we have to be really sensitive to that, because I don't see that we're there.
I think.
Well, projects that don't require, like, solar canopies.
That's kind of what I was saying, that this person would prioritize along with Peter and maybe DPW, say, I mean, this is a grant that we can be eligible for, that requires a bit of implementation, you know. It's just going, once we receive this grant, all we have to do is submit it to the university. So something like that.
As long as that capacity piece isn't lost.
And they could be the watchdog for grant opportunities. And ask them along to department heads who might be busy managing their staff and miss an opportunity here or there.
But does this include coastal resilience?
Thank you, that was the last question that I wanted to ask, because it was mentioned as part of the town meeting conversation. And that broadens the job description tremendously.
I think that that would be ancillary point. And maybe you put that at the bottom of the job description and, you know, say, do what you can for coastal resilience until help comes along, because no way that I'm going to do that.
Exactly.
Again, I think that's why it's important for us to go back and think what the intention of town meeting was. Because if that was a big point for town meeting, then we have figured it out.
Well, yeah. It puts us on a path to be ready to hire a coastal resilience first.
Potentially.
We need to be realistic. I'm just concerned, you know, I understand that we want to honor and respect the intent of town meeting, but, you know, town meeting doesn't write job descriptions. And there's management expertise that we want to bring to bear to make these decisions. To, you know, to select for a town manager decision. And I just, I guess I want to weigh in and say, I don't think it's realistic to think that we're going to find one person who is going to be a grant writer, you know, who has expertise in coastal resilience and will evolve that forward. I mean, if we do, if we want that, I mean, you know, you're going to pay for the highest level of expertise, so you're going to then be looking for someone with a coastal resilience policy background.
Yeah, that's too much.
And, you know, now you're looking at a mid, you know, hundred and twenty-five-plus-thousand-dollar-a-year salary. And if they're going to be doing coastal resilience work, they may not be able to.
At that level, they're specified at that rate.
Yeah. You're going to be sent up for failure expecting too much from the person.
I think they're two different things. And, you know, the board, I'm happy to implement whatever the board wants to do. You can do two positions. You can do, you know, one position and have it be, you know, a very highly, very high level of expertise and a very high pay rate.
Okay, just, that's not my whole idea. I hope the sustainability director would maybe just a little bit of coastal interaction, just to facilitate the town staff forward in the right direction, but not to be an expert in coastal resilience. Because like you said, that's a whole nother educational background.
So you're saying basically you're sticking with the energy and water conservation sustainability issue and not the coastal resilience?
Yeah, I don't see how it's possible, just like you do with the DEI officer. It's just too much to take back from any person.
So to kind of wrap this up, that was the last thing. So I'm going to just quickly go over what I made note of that we listed as priorities that have budget implications for, for our next meeting. And that is, because some money for a consultant study to replace the water mains, I have listed as a priority. Peter said he would check, save as our money for the budget for that. The next is staffing these acquisitions. Does Chief Dunn have a general idea, do you know if it's in his budget yet, or if he has a general idea of how much that would cost?
So the conversation I've had with him is, he would like two positions would be a great advancement to that initiative. And if we can, we want to talk about a plan where we could potentially hire these within the existing budget. But he would want an assurance that his budget is going to be increased in a year or two to add. We would have to be taking, Dr. Taylor referenced it earlier, we have a bunch of vacancies, right?
You could be taking officer positions.
So we could use, we could use money that's now earmarked for patrol officers and put it toward social workers. But we need, we do ultimately need those positions. It's not that we don't need those patrol officer salaries in the budget, it's just that we can't fill them. So we would want to have an agreement that there's a long-term plan to put those positions back in the budget in at what point.
Peter, did that long-term plan that he talked to you about, does that mean a clinician with each patrol division or an on-call? How does it, how would that work?
Well.
So is it four patrol divisions now, right? Four shifts?
Five, or five patrol cars.
I'm talking about?
Different shifts.
Right.
They work at four and two, right?
Right.
So the initial, you know, the initial idea was to have two social workers to cover, so it would be 24/7, right?
Somebody would be on call for?
It would be primarily to cover business hours, some days perhaps more call.
Well, because you certainly run into positions where at night and where you have half your patrol division down there dealing with something that would be needed aggressively.
And I think we would follow, yeah, I would think so too. But I think initially we would follow what it is that the chief sees.
Right, right, right.
His department, so if he's asking for two, I see.
Right, and if we gave him one, he'd be thrilled. But there's clearly, you know, there's clearly a need beyond one or two. But partly it's a, you know, walk before you run. So this is brand-new to them, so let's get one.
Hundred percent more than he has now.
Yeah, and let's get one or two in and see how it works. Find it and make sure it does work before we hire six.
How much of that would be sort of in service to support the current, you know, staff? In other words, training to help your staff be able to respond appropriately to these various human behavior situations? Because I think I see that as probably a critical role.
They're probably pretty well-staffed, I mean, pretty well-trained already, because they're already dealing with it. But I agree, there probably could be some more enhancement.
But the turnover is going to constantly, you know, create more opportunities for that kind of training.
Right, that's true.
I think we need to let the chief figure that out. How he wants to use the positions. I think our job is to support his wishes to get the two. We start with one, however we sort of meet his need. It's up to him to figure it out, how he goes.
And it would be, it would be somewhere that we said maybe two would be better. Is he asking only for one, or is he asking for two?
He's asking for two.
Okay, good.
So if I'm understanding this correctly, we don't need to increase operating budget for FY 24, because we're going to take two patrol officer positions, potentially, assuming that we hope this. We would take two patrol officer positions and make them clinician positions. But for FY 25 budget, perhaps and beyond, we would want to add those in. So it is, this is not a FY 24 budget issue today.
We're just mutating two positions. And with the agreement that we will reinstitute those two officer positions in the next budget.
So we could put that in the strategic plan?
Yes.
That is part of our plan.
I think that's important, to commit to that.
Because it'll be proven by then, to be able to substantiate the request.
That we're not cutting him away too often.
And then we'll know whether or not it works if we're paying enough to get people looking to do that job.
But for our October 1st meeting, that is not something that we need you to present, because we have that option. I just want to be clear on that. The next thing that I have is operating budget increase for the need of removing ourselves from civil service. So having information from Chief Dunn about if there is going to be a significant operating budget increase request to make up for our civil service, we want to see that. The next thing I have is staffing for the fire station. I know that was going to be a tricky one, but I do have that listed.
We're going to deal with that on a separate day. More in depth. Is that right, guys? So we don't need to go into it today?
No, we're not going to go into it today. I'm just going over the list of things that we want Peter to have ready to discuss with us for the next meeting more in depth. Because now budget, right, now that we've discussed them, we do agree. And the next one I have is the DEI officer position, what that would look like if it goes up to the higher.
Grade nine.
If it goes up to grade nine as recommended, and potential budget for that person. The sustainability director position, what that would look like in the budget, how much that would cost. And then the only other one that is, we need to clarify, is the budget for holding audit, the departmental audits. So that, to me, as you mentioned, Peter, is a capital budget request. It is going to be a one-time request. Potentially in the future, operating budget, if it's recommended every year or two years, or so often that we do follow-ups on this audit. So the question is, what are our options for seeing what that would look like in the capital budget? I know it's not what we really discussed in the plan for October 1st meeting, but what are our options?
Probably not going to be October 1st, it's a capital budget.
Yeah, so that's what I'm asking. Would you recommend we take more time to look at that? Do we need to look at it sooner? Because the timing of the capital budget, that kind of thing.
Right, so it's, if we want to, if we want funds for the November town meeting for that study, it sounds like we might, we really need to, you know, move on that ASAP, because we're, you know, we're after the deadline, as it were. It's our deadline, so you can file it. But, yeah, so I guess I just need, I need direction on how much you want to bite off at once. You know, do you want, do you want a number for every department in town? Do you want a number to do the highest priority, two or three departments? How do you want?
We've had a fire one recently, am I correct? So I think the place to start is what have been done? Which departments have already been moved out in the last, which way? And then we need to go from that to see which departments we want to prioritize. This is just my suggestion.
I think it's just community development, dispatch, and fire are the only ones done in the last five years.
That have been done.
And then, of course, the DPW had an organizational study, but that's going to get pretty old by now.
I was thinking DPW, I don't know about, you know, police department. I mean, I'm just thinking of big departments off the top of my head. Maybe we can flush that out a little bit more.
Is it something that we could take a weekend to think about? And, I was going to say, and talk about it on Monday, but it's not Monday. Right, yeah. But could we get suggestions back to you on July? And then maybe on, at our Wednesday meeting? Yeah, at our Wednesday. We could flush it out a little bit more?
I think from Scott's comments, that you probably want general government, right? So you want town manager, finance, human resources.
That's true.
So I just want to reiterate that this document that I put together is items that were identified either at our Saturday meeting or that people sent me as priorities. We now specifically talked about the ones that affect the operating budget, so we can have that more in-depth discussion on the first. And I will take some of the additional language from the previous strategic plan that is not operational and add that in, or not to, does not affect the operating budget, and add that into the draft that I created. When we have a strategic plan done, when we put together.
A draft?
What is?
A draft?
A draft, yes.
Is it called this?
Yeah.
It's at your discretion. We're blazing new territory, because in the past, there was one strategic plan between June and then it was voted in August. In next year, you know, I think it would make sense to start the process in February, March, and wrap up in June, because it flows better with the budget planning cycle that way. You know, we can talk in detail, but, you know, because right now, you're seeing we're a little bit up against it. I mean, it's just in time that we're having this meeting October 1st, and I'm taking away from that, I'm going to have a good idea of what your budget priorities are. It would, you know, maybe it'd be nice to get another month to further refine that. But there's no charter deadline.
Okay, that was kind of plausible, or is there a charter deadline? So what I'd like to do is focus the October 1st meeting. Now, I'm sorry, this is actually.
Go, go, keep going.
Okay. I'd like to focus the October 1st meeting on the operating budget. And I do think that discussion of the fire station and 24/7, that's going to get to another time. So I'd like to try to have something drafted for people to also review on that Saturday. And then, I know personally I want to have another meeting, but maybe a follow-up regular board meeting, take any additional edits from whatever draft I put together and then finalize it. So it'll be finalized sometime mid-October.
Are you going to be looking for anything from us in the way we report or before the October 1st meeting?
Yeah, that's a good point. I will ask Peter to send this out digitally, and people can comment on it as they want to. And once I have the draft, I'll send it out for comments. And then just return it back just to me, just so I can incorporate those edits.
And I just want to thank you, Andrew, for taking this on in my absence.
I would say that this has been really both the chair vice chair, and we've done a great job of this together. It depends, you're like too much. And it kind of supplied too much of my staff to do the work for us. Kind of regret that, but like, it's great to hear.
Thank you, thanks. And I also feel like, I feel like we did a really good job hashing through issues. It's really important, and the one thing I'm very cognizant of is not wasting time. And I don't think these sessions have wasted any time. That's really, really well. So thank you all.
Thank you. Alternative meeting, I think none of us have any more questions. I will follow up with Peter and Nancy this week and their feedback.
Thank you for getting available to the answer questions.
I would issue a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I'm Mr. Saylor.